Good evening, everyone. The time is now 5:28. We are broadcasting and transcribing on all platforms.
Or Southern View, which is my beer.
Having the appointed time of 5:30 arrived, I would like to call the Tuesday, October 8th, 2024 Committee of Ahold to Order. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Quirk, would you please take the role?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Present.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Natriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Henauer.
Here.
Madam Chair, a quorum is present.
I would like a motion for Alderman Donlin to join the meeting via telephone. Thank you. It's been moved in second, and we have Alderman Donlin on the phone. I would like to accept a motion for approval of the September 24, 2024 Committee Minute Meeting. Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Treasurer, would you please present the Treasurer's Report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Treasurer's Report for the Corporate Fund for the month of September. Beginning balance, $49,139,201. We took in total receipts of $21,668,700. Total disbursements in the month of September, $24,211,252, which left the Corporate Fund ending balance in the month of September at $46,596,649. The ending general fund balance included $12,549,442, which is the September ending balance for ARPA money. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. We do have one presentation. Is Josh Sable here? Come on up, Josh. He's with the Heartland Continuum of Care.
Good evening, everybody. We've got several folks who are going to come up and share with you in a few moments about the work they do in the community. So I know this has been a big topic over the last several weeks since I was with you about seven weeks ago to talk about Heartland Housed and the funding you all provide for us. Tonight, we'd like to give you a little bit more glimpse of the work we do, but also all the partners that are very active in the community in efforts to solve homelessness. I know one of the things that can be confusing sometimes is what is Heartland Housed? What is the Continuum of Care? These are really two distinct bodies, right? The Continuum of Care is an organization that is established by HUD, basically. Every community in the country is a part of a Continuum of Care. For us, we just cover Sangamon County. If you go west of us, the Continuum of Care goes from Jacksonville all the way to Quincy, right? So they look different geographically. Some of them cover multiple counties. Ours covers only one county. So the Continuum of Care Board often is agencies who provide services, stakeholders who are in the community working to serve people who are likely to experience homelessness or who are experiencing homelessness. And then recently, our Continuum of Care in 2022 completed a community-wide strategic planning process. During that process, the consultants that came in said, hey, communities that are really moving forward in this space are doing so in part because they have an agency taking the lead. An agency that helps set strategy, that helps record data, that pulls in partners, that builds collaborations, all in an effort to better address homelessness. And that's where Heartland Housed came from. So Heartland Housed was established just about two years ago to become the lead agency for the Continuum of Care. The Continuum of Care can choose whoever they want to be the lead agency, right? So we've had several over the course of the last several years. And the Continuum of Care chooses who is the HMIS lead agency, and you'll hear a little bit more about that in a moment. So as the lead agency for the Continuum of Care, Heartland Housed staff helps to pull together the collaborations, helps to meet funding requirements for HUD and the state, helps to allocate funding that comes from HUD and the state, and then work with the community to, again, ensure that we're moving forward, that we're progressing in how we address homelessness. A snapshot of sort of how our community has organized itself to do this is what we call the Crisis Response System. So there's five key areas. Outreach, we'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. Prevention and diversion, emergency shelter, permanent housing, and coordinated entry. We won't go all in to what each of those are, but Heartland Housed puts together task groups where community collaborators comes together in each one of those. So for coordinated entry, that's the assessment that provides the pathway to supportive housing opportunities. Agencies all across the community have folks that are trained to do that work. And then as people have, as organizations have open spots in their programs, they come to us and say, hey, I'm ready for a referral. And we refer the next most vulnerable person on the list for those housing opportunities. So Heartland Housed helps lead the coordinated entry system. Prevention and diversion, those are the efforts in the community to really help people from experiencing homelessness altogether, right? So your rental assistance, utility assistance, support if someone is perhaps in the eviction process. You could imagine that the resources that exist for that in the community, though they've grown, are inadequate to meet the level of need in the community, right? So I think we've talked recently that numbers around homelessness, why does it keep going up? That happens for a lot of reasons, right? As a society, we've not alleviated poverty. We've not helped to smooth transitions from incarceration or the justice system. We've not adequately staffed mental health services in our country. There's a whole variety of reasons why folks might enter homelessness, but this is one of them. Eviction is one pathway into homelessness. Emergency shelter, that's another space where we have several different organizations that provide that service. So Heartland Housed pulls those groups together on a monthly basis, or more frequently as necessary, to sort of say, what are you seeing? What do you need? What kind of collaboration do we need around emergency shelter? And then permanent housing are rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing programs. Those are the exits to homelessness in the community. And those programs, folks, are paired with a case manager and a rental subsidy, and they're put in housing units across our community where they stabilize and contribute as our neighbors. A closer look at the outreach task group. So one of the things that our system coordinator does on our team is she pulls together any organization in the community that is doing something with street outreach. One of the gaps that certainly has been identified in recent weeks is there is not adequate street outreach efforts in this community. That's long been the case. There are very few grants that cover street outreach. And there are very few organizations in our community that are able to staff full-time people doing street outreach. So one of the reasons for the significance for the hot team is that they are one of the few folks that are full-time devoted to outreach. So the way the street outreach group works, they do meet online. They choose to do that for efficiency. As they do that, they're working to develop a by-names list of every person who's experiencing unsheltered homelessness. So recording data, sharing data, that group, everyone has signed the confidentiality agreement, and they go through the by-names list and says, and say, you know, who's working with that person? Is there a service we can connect them to? What's an update? Do we have them on coordinated entry? All of those types of questions. So that, we call that case conferencing. They also work through different training each month, and they share resources. As some of them are experts in harm reduction, and some of them are experts in the public health space, they're able to connect with each other on clients and let folks know about different resources that are available. And again, coordinated entry. As we encounter folks, the goal is to get every person on coordinated entry that's willing to be on coordinated entry so that we can hopefully connect them with a supportive housing opportunity. One of the successes of that group, earlier this year, recognizing that unsheltered challenge is absolutely a challenge for our community, and it's a challenge for communities across the country. We worked with some technical assistance providers through the state of Illinois, and we went through a process called a 100-day challenge on unsheltered homelessness with communities from Rockford, suburban Cook County, and other places. We set different goals during that. A lot of it was identifying people, helping them get on our by-names list. Some of it was getting folks on coordinated entry. But during that process, we were able, or during those 100 days, 29 people who had a history of unsheltered homelessness were housed. That was something that we were excited about, something that, again, with not having adequate street outreach resources in the community, often the people who miss out on opportunities for housing are those that are unsheltered. So seeing some of those things begin to change in our community is definitely a step in the right direction. With that being said, we're not here to tell you that the system is perfect, that the crisis response system is perfect. All the pieces are figured out. Everyone collaborates flawlessly, and everyone gets along all the time, right? These are organizations who voluntarily work together with a common goal. And so with that in mind, we keep pressing forward. But we also understand that virtually every part of the crisis response system is grossly underfunded, right? Organizations are trying to fill gaps. They're trying to step in in any way that they can. They're collaborating to do that. But at the end of the day, we continue to see increases in homelessness. Across the country, last year, there was a 12% increase in homelessness. In our own community, we saw our point-in-time count increase quite a bit. But one of the things that we've been able to do recently is to establish a data dashboard. So what you can see on our website when you go there is a look at monthly inflow and outflow. So we measured that as people connect with organizations that record data in our community. It gets them in what we call our complete by-names list, and it pulls in their data into this dashboard. So as city leaders, anytime you want, you can go to our website, and you could say, well, how many new people touched the homeless system last month? And you can see it there. You can also see how many people exited. How many people exited to permit housing? How many people exited to inactive? It's all there. And I would be more than happy to sit down with any of you and walk you through that, talk about how it works. It also shows you how many housing placements happen each month. So that's an important data source that we were, or data showcase, really, that we were just able to launch about two months ago. And we think that's a valuable tool for us and for you all. A couple other successes I just want to hit before I get out of the way. One of the things we've, you know, we've seen in recent years is that our Continuum of Care has gotten more competitive at the national level. In 2019, we were scoring roughly 50 points beyond, below the average across the country. What that means, what the significance of that is, is that we're not likely to get new HUD funding. We're likely to lose funding if we're scoring below most of the other communities in the country. Last year, we were three and a half points behind the highest-scoring continuum in the country. So while the system's not perfect, it's improving, and there's absolute proof to show you that that is the case. Your investment is not being squandered as you support efforts to create a better system to address homelessness. Some of the other tangible showcases of that, you can see, going back to 2010, you know, our community lost about $250,000 in HUD funding annually. Some of that, again, was because we were not competitive. Over the last three years, you can start to see that each, in each HUD competition over the last few years, we've been increasing the amount of federal funding coming into the community to address homelessness. Another evidence of things moving in the right direction, as you look at our strategic plan, it'll tell you that by 2028, we're trying to create 765 supportive housing opportunities. Back in 2019, only 94 people were being supported in supportive housing opportunities in our community. Last year, that was up to 245. And then at last month, we had already got that up to 244. A big reason for that increase, a little bit, is that increase in HUD funding that you saw. A big part of this is the state of Illinois's Home Illinois funding. That allocated $1.1 million to create new supportive housing programs. A lot of the agencies that you'll hear from are using those funds to help families and individuals stabilize in housing. So we're seeing some of the increase we're hoping for. But at the end of the day, again, there are gaps, and the system is absolutely imperfect. When you look at this slide, the light blue funding, or light blue triangle, that's the level of HUD funding for our community. The dark blue, that is the state funding, so you can see how significant that funding source was for our community. And then if you look at the red, right now, or at least at the beginning of September, a month ago, there were 240 households on our coordinated entry list. So that means families, individuals in shelters, transitional housing programs, unsheltered in our community. We, on average, say that a single-person household with case management, it costs about $15,000 to support a single person in housing for a year as they work with other services and stabilize. For a family, it's closer to 20 and maybe a little bit higher than that. So we use the number of people on coordinated entry in those numbers to pull together the number of $3.7 million. That's what it would cost to house every single person on coordinated entry. And that red triangle shows you the funding we do not have committed to these programs as a community. So if you wonder why people are waiting on coordinated entry, if you wonder why people are in shelter, unsheltered, after they've had conflict in shelter, or those types of things, the funding to create the supportive housing opportunities we need to ultimately meet functional zero is absolutely inadequate. So just a couple things that I want to highlight on that, and then I will get out of the way. I know there's been a lot of things said about the Continuum of Care. The Continuum of Care is a failure. It's failing us in some ways, and we know that's a more nuanced conversation. The thing that I would say is that the funding that is coming into the Continuum of Care is going out into these rapid rehousing, permanent supportive housing programs. We're not sitting on a pile of cash that we could use to house more folks. And the other thing that I would say is that every person I know in this line of work lives with the tension of failure every single day. Not a single person goes home thinking that this is a smashing success, what we've done as a community. We can show you graphs of scores going up, but at the end of the day, 240 households are homeless and waiting for housing. So nobody here, regardless of what's said or yelled, is going home feeling like they're the hero of this community on any given night. We have a massive gap that we've got to figure out how to solve. And until we do, there will continue to be gaps and struggles in the community, intense conversations. And while we think we can have those more constructively, I want you to see some of the folks who are working every day on the front lines of this issue and doing a tremendous job. I'm incredibly proud of the organizations in this community, how much they've grown over the last four years, and how they're willing to continue going after creating new programs to grow further. So I'm going to shut up, and then I'm going to pass it to our HMIS Administrator, Tracy Cunningham.
Good evening. Once again, my name is Tracy Cunningham. I work at Mercy Communities, but I am the administrator for the entire continuum area. I did want to dispel a couple of inaccuracies that were presented at last week's Tuesday meeting. HMIS, I'm going to give you a little bit of a what-is-it kind of scenario. So it stands for Homeless Management Information Software. The use of an HMIS is required by any HUD-funded program. What does an HMIS do? It collects demographic data on all household members. Some of those are age, gender, race, ethnicity, veteran status, social security numbers, for deduplication purposes only. It also collects the household's homeless history. This, along with disability determination, assists in determining chronic homelessness. Questions such as household income, noncash benefits, and health insurance assist caseworkers in what form of services, you know, that client may need. Those services are also documented on a, so a duplication of benefits does not occur. Many other elements can and are collected on a programmatic or requested basis. An HMIS is a data collection system designed to inform COCs and HUD in understanding the nature and extent of homelessness in their communities so sound policy decisions can be made, along with proper resource allocations. It is also used to deduplicate clients and services across all COC-wide programs, from outreach all the way to housed clients. It assists homeless service providers and some of their respective partners move from homelessness to housing stability or to assist in preventing homelessness altogether. HMIS is not designed to adjudicate services or benefits outside of housing support systems. It is not used to disclose data in a way that violates Fair Housing Act, equal access rules, or break any other privacy laws. And it is also not used to track and/or disclose client information or locations to any form of law enforcement, with a few exceptions provided for in the Federal Register. Locally, there are 14 agencies currently utilizing our HMIS, which is called Community Services. So if you ever speak about the HMIS Community Services, it's, that's the name of it. It's provided through WellSky Software Services. Those agencies are Abundant Face Supportive Services, Contact Ministries, Fifth Street Renaissance, Helping Hands of Springfield, Inner City Mission, Memorial Behavioral Health, Mercy Communities, Phoenix Center, Salvation Army, Springfield Urban League, Washington Street Mission, and Youth Service Bureau. The Springfield Hot Team also has access to it, but only Shannon Allen does. I do want to note that the C task groups have been, they basically refuse to complete the paperwork necessary to join our HMIS for data sharing needs. I do want to note that it was mentioned that Sojourn Shelter and Services was accessible, or was on our system. They are not. They're not allowed by law because they are a domestic violence provider, and by law, they can't utilize the same system. They have their own more private and more secure system to utilize, just because of the nature of their clients. So all of these clients have the ability to, and training for, access and data entry for coordinated entry. Some of the other inaccurate information that was presented was that this data is not being shared across agencies. This is not true. All of our outreach and coordinated entry users, they can communicate via lifetime case notes, and most do if they so choose to. Not all data is shared across the board, as there are still visibility walls put in place for privacy purposes. Agency case notes are not shared outside of their agency to anyone, as these are notes between caseworkers and clients and can be sensitive in nature. Even though Sojourn is not allowed on our HMIS, they still do have an equivalent system, and they do participate in our coordinated entry process, so those people are not being left out. It's just in a more anonymous manner and with their case managers. Some of the questions about data that were brought up last week, Ms. Purchase, Mr. Rockford, Mr. Gregory, all mentioned that you haven't gotten any form of data from us. First, I want to say that I send monthly deduplicated reports to the OPED office under Valhezal every month, and I have for years and years. I've been doing this for 13 years. Identified, meaning no personally identifiable information is ever shared with the city. It is considered raw data in that you would kind of need to understand the HUD side of it, so it, you know, to really understand what it's saying. Also, I want to say that I have never received a formal request of any kind of specific data from this council, more than willing to do so. You know, it's public data, you know, but typically, when grants are given, there's usually upfront an agreement put in place for what do you guys want to see? When do you want to see it? What timeframes do you want to see it in? What agencies do you want to see it for? Or, I should say, what, you know, different household types? The last, or the list is vast as far as what I could provide to this council. Let's see where I'm at. For any kind of data to go out, I just need some specs and maybe, and a request in writing as I do track all data requests that go out and everything that I put out into the world. I'm solely responsible for its accuracy and release. Let's see here. There's many different options already available for you to view, just like Josh had mentioned on heartlandhoused.org. If you go to the Built for Zero, I update that monthly, so it is not a annual thing like you would see with HUD. Any of the HUD reporting you're going to see annually. The Built for Zero is going to show you this monthly, so you're going to see, this month, we had this many people move to inactive. We had this many people move to housing, or we have this many new chronic veterans in Springfield. I have a business card for all of you if you would like to reach out to me. And I also have all those addresses listed on the back of that. So as part of my duties, these reports are always submitted on time and of great accuracy. 100% success rate in our community's data being accepted and passed for all HUD reporting for the last 13 years. So we've never been deemed for late reports. We've never been deemed for, oh, well, the data looks horrible as far as data collection, missing data, null data. So once again, if you have any questions or wanted to require further discussion about any reporting needs, I am available. And I'm going to pass this on to, I don't know who's next. Who's next? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
All right. So I'm Jared Brown. I'm the Director at Washington Street Mission. Also, as of last week, the most recently elected member of the Heartland Continuum of Care's Board of Directors. So Washington Street Mission-
Excuse me, sir. I'm sorry for interrupting. I see people trying to look around you all to look up here. There are some seats available right here, though, in the front row, if you would like, just so that they could see. I see them trying to scoot their head around you. Sorry.
No, you're fine. So the mission served our community for 115 years. We've served the most vulnerable citizens within this committee. On a daily basis, we serve more of the community's unsheltered individuals, those who are not accessing our shelter system, than any other organization. Last year, we served 43,000 people that walked through our doors, which is a tremendous number. 164 people enter our doors every single day. That's the average through this year. During the winter, it's a little bit higher, sometimes more than 200. During the summertime, when it's a little milder weather, we see a few less people coming in through the doors. They come to us for safety. They come to us for shelter, day shelter from the elements outside. They come to us for shelter, day shelter from the elements outside. They come to us for food, for a warm meal, for coffee. More than 3,000 people accessed clothes through our clothing hall last year. More than 4,500 took showers with our publicly available showers. And more than 5,200 accessed our laundry services. Those numbers continue to grow, year over year. Absolutely continue to grow. And even for individuals who are getting housed, the need for those supportive services, those basic need services, continue. But while we're committed to meeting the most basic needs of those living in our community, our real goal, when someone walks through our door, is to get them sheltered, to get them on the path for permanent housing, to get them the addiction and recovery, the treatment that they need to overcome their addiction. Our goal is to get them mental and behavioral health services. And then our goal is to help them overcome the barriers to employment that they have. And those barriers are significant. We have the lowest possible barrier to entry for services of any organization in our community. Approximately 35% of those who walk through our doors are involved or are justice-involved. That includes those who are on the registry, those who are registered offenders. We work with them every day, just as the Phoenix Center does, just as Fifth Street Renaissance does, just as other members of the continuum do. We help them with whatever services they need, whether it's temporary shelter, or whether it is finding them employment, which is nearly impossible for that population. But all of our agencies are working with those individuals. As an agency, we're not HUD-funded. We don't actually provide housing. We serve as an entry point. We serve as a place where anyone in our community can come, regardless of their background, regardless of their situation, and find someone to help them out. We choose to be part of the continuum, because we know that the only way that we can help the people that we serve is to be part of a system of care that's designed to address the holistic needs of those individuals in our community. As an agency, 2/3 of our employees have lived experience. They know what they're doing. They know what the challenges are, because they've been through those challenges. Whether it's that they've experienced homelessness, or whether they've experienced alcoholism, or whether they've experienced substance abuse issues, they have lived experience. Several of our board members have lived experience. And it's important, because they're the ones who help us to drive what our work in the community is. And our employees, who are already underpaid, spend more than their time, their own personal time, continuing their work. Almost all of our employees serve on our partner's treatment ministry. So when they're not in the mission, they're out in the community feeding people at night who are on the streets, still reaching out to them to try to bring them into the system, to try to get them into shelter and into housing. When I worked for a funder, which was not too long ago, I remember sitting through continuum meetings a decade ago, 12 years ago. And at the time, it was interesting sitting in those meetings, because the only conversations that occurred in those meetings were about funding and about the number of emergency shelter beds we had in our community. There was some talk of collaboration, but most of that left, or was left at the door on the way out. Today, it is a completely different environment. The level of partnership, collaboration between agencies, and the open line of communication have led to extraordinary results. 240 people housed this year. 10 years ago, that was a dream. 10 years ago, there is nobody working in social services that would have told you that that was possible within this community. And it's only been possible because of the people sitting behind me. They are the ones who are actually working every single day to solve these problems, and oftentimes without appreciation and without support from this community. There's not a day that goes by that the staff from these other agencies are not in the mission. It may be to meet with a client. It may mean be to take someone to a housing appointment. It may be to respond to a referral or consult on a shared case. But every day, individuals from these agencies are within my building, reaching out to those community members to see how we can better serve them. Those partnerships extend beyond social services. They extend to the city. When we came out of COVID and expanded our hours to afternoon hours in order to meet the growing need, it was the city and the county and capital township that provided the funding for those positions. The township continues its funding today. In 2023, the Police Department utilized a large portion of a co-response grant through the Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority to help build capacity among many of our homeless service providers, including the mission. This is the funding that's associated with SEED. We are the only one of the four communities who received that funding, who actually put that funding towards social services. The others used it to build their own or bolster their own ranks. Our Police Department had that opportunity to keep the money internally, to bolster their own ranks with those dollars. But they saw the growing need in our community and found a way to be able to bolster services so that these wraparound supports exist. And for that, we should commend them, because I think that all of us fail to do it enough. The ICJ of funding allowed us to provide private and secure space for our partners to bring services into the building for the first time. So we have rooms and we have office space available to all of our partner agencies to be able to provide mental health services and therapeutic services within the mission, to be able to provide addiction treatment services within the mission, to be able to have office space that's private for case managers of other organizations, for housing specialists who have meetings there, for our HOT team when they need space. That's what that funding allowed, is for us to bring all of these outside services into the place where our unsheltered community already is. So that way, they have access to those services faster. That way, there's less lead time when it comes to referring people to those services. But it also allowed us to bolster our work. This year, in the last 10 months, we've added a free eight-week or 16-session anger management class. We did so to provide a no-cost option to those that are justice-involved, who would otherwise have to pay a phenomenal amount for those services when they may not already have them. And so we work with probation in order to bring people into those anger management classes. We work with our partners for any referrals that they may have coming into that. We launched a 12-course life skills and job skills course, open to the public, but designed for individuals who have spent time on the streets, that have spent time in homelessness and experienced a loss of life, skills, and job skills that often accompanies that. The partnership put in place, or helped us to put in place, our first full-time case manager, which we didn't have. Now, all of our staff are involved in case management, because that's what we have to do. But now we have someone who's full-time, someone who is working with all of the individuals who come in. But in the four months that she's been in that position, she now is completely loaded down. She has no more time, because the need is that high. One person cannot serve the needs of 100 or 150 people. With the next round of ICJ of funding, if the state ever approves budgets, it'll allow us to hire a second caseworker position. It'll allow us to hire a part-time security officer that will actually be there to reduce the number of times that we have to rely upon the Police Department for help. And it'll help us to hire a community engagement position with specific street outreach duties. But more importantly, it'll allow us to expand our new jobs program, from eight participants annually to 16. We started a jobs program two months ago, and really, it's coming out of the SEED collaborative. It's meeting the unmet needs that exist in this community. A jobs program that provides 26 weeks of job coaching, mentorship, and intensive case management to individuals who are within our homeless system. And it provides day-one employment to them. So the first day of the program, they are working, and they have a paycheck coming in. And then we provide the bridge to permanent employment elsewhere. So these are the differences that these partnerships make, is that all of us are working together. There's not a duplication of services, but there is us identifying what gaps exist and how we fill them. But the challenge we have is that the need is outpacing the resources that are available. We will have served a record number of people again this year. There's absolutely no doubt in my mind, at the end of the year, we will probably surpass 44,000 or 45,000. If you were to come into the mission today and look around and get to know everyone, and you were to come back six months from now, 70% of the people that are in there, you wouldn't know, because that's how many people are getting housed and how many people are new coming into the system. We would love to spend every dollar we have on prevention, but the reality is that every dollar that we have is going towards just keeping up with the number of people coming The tone of these meetings over the past eight weeks has devolved to the point that misinformation has largely taken over. And as a continuum of this community's service providers, we see our community moving backwards. And it's scary. It's time that the conversation changes. It's time that we set aside the personal politics and the attacks on every institution and every person in this community, and we begin to solve this problem together. We built the foundation. Now's the time for us to celebrate the successes that we've had and to focus on how we build the rest of the house. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
And?
So I'm Lisa. I'm with Memorial Behavioral Health's PATH Program. And so I'm going to be briefly tell you what I do in that role with Memorial Behavioral Health and the continuum. So I provide complex care coordination for the homeless that have a severe mental health diagnosis. I get referrals internally through street outreach and from our many Heartland Continuum Care partners. Some of the struggles that we are facing is we have enough funding for a two-person case management team. We have a waitlist. We serve a very complex clientele who has very intensive case management. So, we can only open enough people that we can serve to our best ability. So in addition to having a full caseload, I do outreach services for the sheltered and the unsheltered. And with the homeless task group through the continuum, I'm the one that kind of provides the linkage to the behavioral health services. So, my slide says that I have housed 25 people in the fiscal year '24 in Outreach '66. That is the past success, but it really comes with the system that we've built, with a really great partnership that we have. I couldn't do it without the system. I'm really proud of our collaborations and my role in it. I don't have a lot to say, but I just wanted to explain what we do and how it fits into the scenario.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't going to move until I saw my name up there. Hi, my name is Penny Powell. I'm the Executive Director of Fifth Street Renaissance. I have been with Fifth Street Renaissance for 22 years. I have been on the continuum all of that time and before that. And so I may be, I don't want to date myself, but I may be the oldest person or the longest-serving person on the continuum at this point. And the one first and foremost thing that I wanted to say is that today's continuum, under the leadership of Heartland Housed, has more organization, more leadership, more activities, more housing, more coordination, and more services than I have ever seen at the continuum level. And that's no disrespect to the agencies that served before. I was one of those agencies. But we've never had the level of coordination that allowed us to be organized and to work together. And I think you said that before it was about the funding, and that's pretty much where it stopped. It was a necessity to receive HUD funding. So what I'm seeing today gives me more hope than I've had in 20 years, that we will eventually bring homelessness to functional zero in this community. Is it an uphill battle? Of course it is. It's not getting -- it is getting better, but you can't see it right now. Fifth Street Renaissance serves all people in 20-plus programs, depending on what funding we have available, with a very diverse staff, with staff who have lived experience, with staff who know how to get better, who know how to recover, who know how to be successful, who know how to grow, and who know how to show our clients what it takes to get there. I am so incredibly proud of my staff. This doesn't -- this work never ends. I can't tell you the number of days that I'm at home on my couch and somebody's at the grocery store. Hey, I came across this person and they need help. What do you want me to do? It doesn't stop for them. Some of them are here with me. I'm so proud of them. So, we have a mobile medical unit. Our mobile medical unit provides services all across the state of Illinois, doing various health services, responding to public health crises. Our housing programs here in Springfield, including transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, both agency-owned facilities and community-based rapid rehousing programs that are newer efforts for us, and new DHS-sponsored public supportive housing programs. We have housing that exclusively serves the needs of veterans, males, females, and families. We have specialized housing subsidy programs that serve specific populations. And we have a motel and hotel voucher program that is emergency shelter. We also operate, on behalf of the Continuum of Care, we operate the Homeless Prevention Program. That is a program that keeps more people from becoming homeless by keeping them in their homes. That program in 2018, 2019, was funded at $45,614. This year, it's funded at $400,000, just trying to keep up, trying to keep the numbers from going up and increasing and creating more street homelessness in this community. It is a constant uphill battle, and if we can get more money next year, we will apply and try to get it into our community. We also operate the Project Relief Program for CWLP. We qualify the folks that they send to -- We qualify the folks that they send to us for utility assistance. Our health programs, including health screenings such as HIV, hepatitis C, STI, blood pressure screening, glucose, cholesterol. We do risk reduction with safer sex kits and overdose education with harm reduction supplies, including nasal Narcan, opioid test strips, and various PPE distribution along with COVID test kits distribution. It's still not gone. We also respond to things in the community where we're needed. Some of you may remember us responding to the Bel Air Hotel when it closed down and helping to keep those folks from becoming homeless. Most recently, Fifth Street Renaissance, thank you, Fifth Street Renaissance, Heartland Housed, and other partners provided assistance to thirty-six households as they were forced to move from old-town apartments. Assistance included security deposits, rental assistance, moving costs for senior households, and housing navigation. But even beyond that, there was so much work that went into that project because a lot of those households were infested with rodents and bedbugs and roaches and other things that we had to deal with before we could move them into new housing. So we do have statewide programs, but for the purpose of this meeting, I pulled out some of our local data and just quickly want to go through some of our numbers. As of since July 1st, we have provided eight thousand two hundred and seventy nights of housing, nine hundred and forty-four referrals to, and twelve hundred and twenty-four instances of transportation either in person or by bus tokens or passes for medical, mental health, housing, addiction, and employment services, eight hundred and forty-one assisted housing search and advocacy, fifty-six IDs and birth certificates, eleven hundred and thirty-eight opioid overdose prevention services, including nasal Narcan, Xylazine, and Fentanyl test strips, seven hundred and fifty-three COVID home test kits with face masks and hand sanitizer, four hundred and five other health services, and thirty-three thousand four hundred dollars in homeless prevention just in September, trying to keep people housed. And I'll close with, you know, this is not an easy job. This is not an easy job, and there are, there's never going to be a perfect system, but we're working towards one that we believe will work under the leadership of Heartland Housed and the Continuum of Care. And so I would just ask that, let's all get along and ask questions and have the meetings that we need to have in order to make things better in our community for the people who need our help today, but most importantly, for the people that are going to need our help tomorrow and next week.
Thank you, Penny.
Thank you, Penny.
Good evening. My name is Joanna Cooley. I'm the Executive Director of the Phoenix Center here in Springfield. We have three locations here in Springfield, on Lawrence, on Skerritt, and on Dirksen, and we also have a location in Quincy. I want to say how honored I am to be here this evening, but I also want to say how exhausting it has been to watch the last few weeks of the city council meeting sitting at my house. It's exhausting to be a part of this community, provides social services for thirty-eight years. I've been at the Phoenix Center since 2006, and just to hear all the work that's being done, not only by the Phoenix Center, but by all these other agencies that are represented here, minimized is very difficult. And it's also difficult for me to hear the way that individuals have spoken to you as a city council. I find it has been very disrespectful. And I agree with what Penny has said and Jared in that we just need to start communicating more and to be able to work together, because we are providing solutions out there. We are doing the work, and so a lot of what's been presented is so inaccurate. The Phoenix Center serves as Central Illinois LGBT Community Center, and we provide a variety of services. Like Fifth Street, we provide a lot of public health services, HIV/HEP-C STD testing. We have the Sherry Project, which is the Springfield Harm Reduction Initiative, and it's a harm reduction program, and we are the largest harm reduction program south of I-80. We see people who are in active drug use. We make sure that they have supplies that they need, A, to keep from overdosing, to keep people out of the emergency rooms, and also to make sure that people are safe, so that we're not seeing the continued transmission of HIV and hepatitis C. We distribute both injectable and nasal Narcan. We want to make sure that not only do, that people are in active use, have this available, but also that people who are family members, people who are community members have this. And we want to make sure that people are aware of what it is and what it isn't. The services that we provide are provided not only in Sangamon County, but also in fifteen other, well, fourteen other Central Illinois counties. We provide outreach here in Springfield specifically. We make sure that people have the public health services, the linkage to medical and mental health services, that we get people into the coordinated entry so that we can help them to get housed. Sometimes people qualify for the housing that we provide. We see four, from what I see, or from my opinion, we see four of the more marginalized groups in our community. We see the homeless. We serve the homeless. We serve people who are in active use. We serve the LGBT community, and we serve people who are HIV-positive. And the two housing programs that we have at Phoenix Center provide housing for those two populations, the HIV-positive population and the LGBT community. The LGBT community are probably one of the more marginalized groups within the homeless community in that they are seen as, in many of the shelters that we have here in the community, even though staff has been trained and directors are supportive, it doesn't take away the bullying and the difficulties that come along from the other people who are participating in those shelters. So we try to make sure that people understand that we are an LGBT center and that we understand their needs, and we can be supportive of people who are transgender and the services and the support that they need. And we make sure that people have referrals to treatment, that they have referrals to, and supportive services, and referrals to things like transportation and helping them get to the appointments that they need to get to. Will you go to the next slide? In our LGBT services, we provide, we have a youth group, we have a young adult group, we have a transgender support group, Parents of Transgender Children Support Group, we have a recovery group, a BI group, Pride on the East Side for LGBTQ+ people of color, and then we provide social and educational groups, and then the Phoenix Center does Springfield Pride Fest, which is a large festival that we do every year downtown in Springfield. And then as far as education, we do a lot of professional development, and we do presentations in the schools. To wrap up my presentation, I have a few numbers. I just want to share, so in 2024, so far, we have housed twenty-eight individuals, and those would be people who are either HIV-positive and/or LGBTQ+. We've gotten eleven people into treatment. We have gotten fifteen people entered into coordinated entry. We have seen one hundred and twenty-five people during our Springfield street outreach. We have made eight hundred and forty-seven community referrals. We've distributed three thousand seven hundred and forty-two doses of Narcan, two hundred eighty-nine thousand six hundred and forty clean syringes. We have seen forty-one individuals in our licensed counseling program. We have seen, what does that say? Oh, individuals attending group, eighteen hundred and forty-nine individuals have attended our groups, and we have four thousand five hundred and sixteen people accessing our services. We provide food through three food pantries, personal hygiene products, clothing, the testing, linkage to medical and mental health services, community referrals, transportation, SMTD bus tokens, and harm reduction supplies. And other than the Narcan and syringe distribution, those numbers are specific to Springfield and Sangamon County. The two things that I want to mention in closing are two things that have been brought up at previous council meetings that I think need to be clarified. The first one that was brought up last week was that everyone doing this work needs to have an MSW, or needs to have a license or a master's degree. Being a person that has a PhD, I understand the importance of education, but there's more important things, important things like compassion and empathy. And if you read a current-day grant application, they're going to tell you they want to see people who have lived experience. They want to see people who have been homeless, people who have been in active addiction, people who have HIV. They want them in your, on your staff, they want them on your board. And in the audience tonight, outreach workers, all stand up. These are the people doing the work on the street. They're people with various backgrounds, various ethnicities, various experiences, and they are doing the job. And not every single one of them has a degree, but I guarantee you, they are all putting forth their best effort, and they're doing a great job of it. And the second thing that I want to mention that has been spoken about is that it has been said several times that, and I'm going to, I don't have the exact number, but it's been said, we had two hundred and forty-two homeless people, you know, three years ago, we still have two hundred and forty-two homeless people. Well, the reason that we have consistency in those numbers is not because they're the same two hundred and forty-two people. It's because every day we get calls from Quincy and Jacksonville and Chicago and Bloomington, because they hear about the quality of the services in Springfield, they hear about the quality of the agencies, about our Continuum of Care, and people want to come here who are homeless. People who are police officers in Jacksonville call and want to get people into Helping Hands. People in Quincy, we go over there to do services. They want to know how they can get to Springfield so they can access rapid rehousing and shelter diversion dollars. So it's not the same people. We're doing such great work that people are wanting to come here because of the quality of services in the city that we have to offer, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joanna.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Jill Johnson. I am the Director of Development and Direction at Helping Hands in Springfield, and I'd like to take a few moments to talk about what Helping Hands is doing. Helping Hands of Springfield is an active part of the Foundation of Agencies, serving and supporting the unhoused and underserved members of our community. We are a social service agency that works with male and females, eighteen and eighteen-two, and at this very moment, eighty-five-year-olds on a 24/7 basis. Our daily mission is to help, shelter, and house. I would like to share our three core programs, well, three of our core programs at our agency. Helping Hands of Springfield Shelter is a heating and cooling center, depending on the season. We provide day services with case management and support services, with a current year-to-date total of fifteen thousand and twenty-six. That averages to about six, just over sixteen hundred a month. Our front door and admin services have a year-to-date average of two hundred and fifty persons a month, seeking notary services, mail, referrals, resources, contacts, appointments, and connections. We have a sleeping capacity of a hundred and forty persons a night, with the majority of those beds being allocated for males. But we work in close partnership with Contact Ministries, Mercy Community, and Souljahen for their works with women with children, to ensure that everybody who wants shelter can be sheltered. There was a great concern of how people would get to the shelter in January when we moved to Dirksen Parkway. With that move, we developed a transportation team and shuttle service that runs seven days a week with several designated stops downtown area to get our consumers back to the shelter. We have partnered with and have a great appreciation for SMTD that has two dedicated bus routes, six and nine, that stop at our front door. Our transportation team also helps with our medical appointments, prescription pickup, job interview, hospital discharge, and any emergency community pickups as dictated by Springfield Police. There is an ever-increasing amount of people that move to this area with little planning, less finances, and nowhere to go. We have staff that focus and work on diversion, meaning we connect them with people, we connect the people with resources and sometimes other agencies to get them back to their home area where they can be helped. Secondly, I'd like to talk about our housing program. Under the direction of Virginia Persley, we have a powerhouse housing program, doing what a lot of people said could not be done. Using a housing-first model, coordinated entry, and seven very dedicated case managers, our housing program manages thirty-three clients at our Park Street location, which, by the way, is having our first year anniversary this month, twenty-two scattered site units, which makes that program full, and twenty-six rapid rehousing clients, with two more moving into their own apartments this Friday. Some people may not be impressed with those numbers and say, why aren't more people being housed? Well, one of the reasons is we need more landlords, we need more affordable housing, we need more handicap-accessible housing. We are ready to take on more, we just need the support in that area. I would also like to add that our housing case managers are in the community five days a week. The question has been raised, what do they do? And I'd like to share that. They are working a plan of service, support, and stabilization to some people who have never lived independently. They have been historically addicted, working through some level of mental health deficit, chronic medical issues, and a genuine fear of being alone after being housed. Our housing program educates, provides education in budgeting, health, transportation, independent living skills, mentoring, and monitoring. And I don't want to forget, they are an excellent search team. When a name comes up for housing, they are out there looking for that person. And in partnership with the outreach teams from the city, Shannon Allen and Officer Newman, Heartland Housed, the NBH PATH Program, and the Phoenix Center Outreach Team, they're out there working with those persons. Again, the mission is always to help, shelter, and house. I would also like to highlight our representative PAE services. With over a hundred clients benefiting under our director, Andy Jones, and his PAE specialists, they ensure that the basic needs are met, their housing, food, and clothing. They provide education on budgeting, ensure bills are paid, people stay housed, and that they are not victimized and taken advantage of. They also mediate the world of Social Security for those who don't even understand how that process works, but get monthly entitlements. I speak daily about Helping Hands to people who will tell me, well, I didn't know that. And I would like to enlighten you all with some more common misinformation, and I like to call it the "Did You Knows." Did you know that three years ago, we had fourteen employees and we now have forty? Did you know our housing, our housing program houses two to five people a month from the coordinated entry list, setting them up for success with the majority of the things they need to go into that apartment, including a case manager? Did you know we have an off-site clinic of Central County's Health Clinic with two dynamic nurses four days a week, and the community is welcome to access that service? Did you know the St. John School of Nursing students, they gain their community hours and experience by providing a biweekly hand and foot clinic to our shelter participants? When you are unhoused, the hand and the foot are the tools of the trade. Did you know we help people get connected to mental health services? SIU Trauma and Recovery, aka FRAN, comes twice a week for ongoing therapy. She's also our crisis go-to when there are issues with the homeless in the community. She comes when we call. Memorial Behavioral Health also has weekly times, and we keep 988 on speed dial for intervention and support. Did you know there are quite a few people in shelter that have never been on drugs? They do not have a mental health issue. They actually have jobs, they go to school. We have two in barber school right now. They simply need times and a helping hand to get back on track. Did you know that we are, quote, "hands-down the best food of any shelter people have ever been in"? With community donations, an awesome kitchen team, and a pool of over six hundred compassionate, community-oriented meal providers, we are able to feed the thousands of persons that use our services. Did you know we do not breathalyze? We don't make people pay to spend the night, we don't take their link cards, we do not charge for the shuttle, we do not lock people in cells, even though we're located on the side of detention facility. We do not run people's names nightly and call the police to get them picked up, and we don't even make you be clean and sober for an extended amount of time. We also do not take keys to cars for you to stay in shelter. There's a lot of misinformation about us out there. I spend a lot of time talking about trying to prove what we do, and I think our work speaks for itself. When we are sleeping a hundred and twelve people on a warm night, when our agencies are willingly working and partnering together, when those that are now housed run me down in Dollar Tree and say, in one year, I'm coming back and apply for a job, when we have rural officers and hospitals bringing people to our front door- have rural officers and hospitals bringing people to our front door because we can and we do make it happen for them, and when the businesses that surround the agency that did not want us there now hire men from the shelter, let us visit and play with the dogs next door, and they welcome us in as customers, we need people to listen to that as well. So as of today, and ongoing after tomorrow, if you don't know, and you're questioned, and you have to ask, what are we doing? We help, we shelter, and we house. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
Good evening.
You guys get tonight?
Don't drop them all. Thank you.
It's all good.
Hey, my name is Tracy Dill, and I'm the Director of Shelter and Counseling at Contact Ministries. Today, I want to share some of the critical services that we offer that ensure our clients have the tools they need to live self-sufficient lives once they leave our care. We understand that the road to independence is not always smooth. Mental health struggles, substance abuse, and other barriers can all cause clients to return to us, sometimes more than once. However, we firmly believe in the power of resilience and continue to plant seeds of hope and growth in every opportunity. At Contact Ministries, we provide holistic support, offering everything from housing stability and job readiness programs to access to mental health counselors and substance abuse treatment. We know that addressing basic needs is essential, so we help clients with food, transportation, and healthcare services, ensuring they have the foundation and support needed to move forward. Our shelter is not just a place to stay, it's a stepping stone towards a brighter future. Through life skills workshops, financial literacy training, and access to community resources, we help each individual build a plan for lasting stability. For our clients who face significant challenges with mental health or addiction, we offer personalized counseling and referrals to treatment programs, walking with them on their journey toward recovery. We know that, we know that progress can sometimes be slow, and setbacks are part of the process, but at Contact Ministries, we are committed to seeing each and every one of our clients through whatever they are going through at that time. Every time we meet someone where they are, we plant another seed of hope and opportunity, knowing that one, one day, those seeds will bear fruit. Our goal is not only to provide temporary relief, but to help our clients develop the resilience, strength, and skills needed to achieve self-sufficient and better qualities of life. So here's our, our numbers. So seventy-one people, this was our 2023 numbers, seventy-one people were assisted with in-house mental health services. So with our mental health services, I am, I know that it's difficult sometimes for, for clients to get into mental health services and get counselors and stuff right now because it's the high need of what's been going on, but as a licensed clinician, I am, we are able to, and we have adopted a partnership with U I S for their interns that are in the counseling and wanting to get their license as well. So that has helped us out a whole lot. We have a hundred-and-thirty-six people were helped with medical prescriptions. Three-hundred-and-seventy-two families were housed in our homeless shelters last year. Thirty-eight thousand five-hundred-and-eighty-four meals were served in our shelters, and ten-thousand-nine-hundred-and-nine hours of life skill classes were attended by our shelter residents. This included tutoring for our school-aged children. So also with that, we started to do our own, like, domestic violence classes, which is one of our old clients who had lived experiences of domestic violence, and she is the one that is running the program. And actually with that, they feel more comfortable sometimes listening to someone that has been through that experience, so they really enjoy that program. We also have started a N A A A in the evenings, and that is through our lived experience. We always do lived experience with that as well. And then we have, like, our life skill classes. Sometimes we don't think it's that important, but just knowing how to keep a house up and different things like that, all of the things that sometimes people think are easy and things that people should know are things that they really need in order for them to be able to sustain and to treat landlords' properties in the way that they need to be treated. We also have how to get a job, how to keep a job, but my favorite one of all is, my favorite one of all is Purpose Driven Life. That is one of the classes for them to know about their purpose, and they really enjoy that class because that gives them hope. So we started a new thing. We are continuously and continuously trying to figure out, what can we do different? What can we do better? So we, for one, we have meetings monthly with all of our staff, but then we also have meetings weekly to figure out with myself, Cindy, the Executive Director, and then all the case managers. We like to meet and figure out what can we do different and see some of the barriers that some of the clients are having. And so we really decided that we needed to really truthfully dig into that wraparound principle to where not only so inside of our agency, so myself, Cindy Drum, the Executive Director, Madison, Tariqa, Tamiya, all of us, we all come together, Darlene, we all come together, all of the leaders, and what we do is, we begin to do wraparounds with every single last one of our clients. So it makes them, it's like accountability, and it gets for us to really know exactly where they're at, what they need, and things like that. So then that way afterwards, we're able to call out to the Heartland Continuum. If there's services that we are not aware of, then we are able to call out to other agencies to see if that's something that they can help us with, and it makes our job so much easier. Yes, yes, so, you can click. Okay, so she gave me permission to do this, and this was a story right here that really touched me, and her name was Eva. And just thinking back, it was just amazing because when Eva first moved here, the first place she went was Ten City. And then after that, she had went to Helping Hands for a while, then she left there and went to Salvation Army Overflow. And Dee Givens had called me when she was at Salvation Overflow and said, listen, Eva needs this specific type of help, because the thing that I've realized and I learned is that I can't reach everybody. And it may be someone that I cannot reach, but there may be someone else in my organization that is able to reach them. And so that's why a lot of that wraparound, and even in the, with the continuum, if there's someone that I may not be able to reach, or we may not be able to reach, maybe there's someone there that's able to reach them and give more insight on what's really going on with this individual. So she had been through a lot of trauma in her life. She used to seem like she was just really evil, I'm like, I just can't do her. But the whole time, it was the trauma that she had, and it was someone else that was able to help me to help her. And so that's what she did, and now she lives at Timberlake Supportive Living. Thank you.
Josh.
Good evening. My name is Amy Voiles. I'm the Executive Director of Mercy Communities. I am also the Vice Chair of the Heartland Continuum of Care. I wanted to take a moment to tell you a little bit about Mercy Communities and the work that we do. We provide, we have, we are a housing program. We do provide ten units of transitional, transitional housing, which is a school-oriented program that takes employment and, and education-based services where mothers with children are housed for up to two years while getting back on their feet. We have permanent supportive housing. We currently have twenty units of permanent supportive housing at a time. It is a disability-based program, which serves families of any makeup as long as they have children under the age of eighteen. Rapid rehousing is a newer program for us as well, and it is, right now, we have up to six units, and it's a two-year tenant-based rental assistance program. What Mercy Communities is not is an emergency shelter. We get calls every day, so I'm not here to talk to you about outreach, although I don't want to minimize the work that they do, it's incredibly important, and also, you know, we don't provide the emergency shelter services as well. So one of the things that we do with our families, not only do we provide them with fully furnished housing, that, by the way, they get to take with them when they leave our program, we provide comprehensive case management services. I've listed all the things that those, that those provide, plus much more. We do focus, have a great emphasis on budgeting, budgeting and goal-setting. So we do provide twice-weekly life skills classes, transportation, referrals, et cetera. Within our supportive services, we take the, the voice of lived experience very seriously. We currently have one case manager and two board members on our team with lived experience. Mercy also lends client leaders with lived experience at the continuum level through the Heartland Continuum of Care Board of Directors and the Lived Experience Advisory Board. Next slide, please. One of the questions that popped up last week was, are we working together? Boy, are we working together. Tracy just gave you an excellent example of the ways that all the agencies work together, and I brought one with me as well. I apologize, my PowerPoint did not PDF very well. So, that's okay. I want to talk to you about Jay. She is a current client in our transitional program. She entered the, entered the Heartland Continuum of Care program system back in, I believe, December of last year. She stayed at Sojourn. During her time at Sojourn, they realized that there was additional supports that she needed, and they made the referral to Mercy Communities. Jay entered our transitional program, and she's been there since March. While in our transitional program, she received a voucher, Section Eight voucher from the Housing Authority, and came to us, not quite sure what to do with that. So Mercy's case managers reached out to Nick Dodson, the Housing Navigator with the Heartland Continuum of Care and Helping Hands of Springfield, for help finding a unit. Nick worked with the statewide referral network, which is a partner agency of ours, and found a unit that would accept the voucher, and Jay is now moving into her permanent housing next week with the Nehemiah Affordable Housing Program. So a great success story that, that clearly identifies six different partners, and I guarantee you, there were much more of those along the way that I didn't mention. Overall, Mercy serves approximately fifty families with about a hundred children each year with housing and supportive services that they need to live life independently and self-sufficiently. As additional funding becomes available through the State of Illinois or HUD, we will continue to apply for those funds, and if awarded, we will add units of housing and the staff necessary to support them. We cannot grow without increased funding. Mercy Communities, as you've heard just a little bit ago, we also serve as the HMIS Lead Agency. We are funded, they, HMIS is funded through Heartland Housed, and we employ Tracy Cunningham, the local HMIS Administrator whom you just heard from. We submit all of the necessary timely and accurate reports to HUD, the State of Illinois, and other funders, including you, the City of Springfield. Tracy summed up HMIS nicely, but if you have any other questions about it, if you have any questions administrative or otherwise, I'm happy to assist. And please remember that if you want data, all you have to do is ask for it within parameter, with the parameters. Just reach out to Tracy. The growth made by the continuum in the last five years is incredible. When I joined the continuum, working at Helping Hands nine, nine years ago, we had no best practices or policies and procedures in place. We had no real structure. We didn't know who would be the lead agency and write this year's NOFO, the Notice of Opportunity, Notice of Funding Opportunity, which is the large COC grant that Josh referred to earlier. The chaos and the discord was evident, as we were the lowest-performing COC in the state and likely near the bottom of the entire country. Each agency was working in silos, being very protective of their funding, throwing together the grant application as best we could, with little help, in addition to our day-to-day responsibilities that did not decrease just because the NOFO was due. Not until the Heartland Continuum of Care hired a competent and qualified leader did we have any real plan in place. Now, our grant scores have increased year after year, adding additional housing dollars to our community. We have a strategic plan that maps out where we're going in the upcoming years. We have policies and procedures in place, including best practices for everything from coordinated entry to emergency transfers to housing guidelines and much more. Yes, we have a lot of work ahead of us to reach functional zero, we know that. That's our primary goal, but I can assure you that we are on track, and your dollars invested in this continuum are not going to waste. Finally, as the Vice Chair of the Heartland Continuum of Care, I'd like to invite every single one of you to participate in our bi-monthly general membership meetings. Instead of saying that we aren't here, we aren't presenting to you, I urge you to do your part, do your research, and join us. Each meeting has time set aside for questions, and we're happy to answer them. If you do join us, you'll see the excellent way we work together and how all the agencies around the table are an important part of the equation. At the very least, please join at the continuum mailing list. It's right at the top of the Heartland Housed website. It's very easy. You put your email address in, and all of a sudden, you have a whole lot more information at your fingertips. So I thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Amy.
So Josh, is that it? Oh, okay. After, after Nick.
I'll keep it brief, gang. My name's Nick Dodson, I'm the Housing Navigator for the Heartland Continuum of Care. I've been doing this work for three years now. My role is onboarding landlords to the programs, helping them understand what the programs are, how the social service agents interact with the clients, expanding affordable housing. I'm honored to work with everyone in this office, on this, in the back, every single day, if it's not text messages about terrible situations, or success stories, or needing a unit like Amy shared. There's a lot of wins, there's a lot of losses. We are a dysfunctional family, much like many agencies and organizations in uniting bodies, but we are a great organizing body that I'm extremely proud of. With that being said, I'm here to introduce one of my landlords that I recruited three years ago when I first started by simply cold-calling him. So I wanted to just bring Daniel Nica, one of our biggest affordable housing providers in the continuum, to just give a small testimony of his work with the continuum.
Thank you, City Council members. My name is Daniel Nica, and I am a local housing provider that focuses on preserving and growing affordable housing in our community. I want to begin by saying how honored I am to be here today to speak on behalf of the collaborative work done between myself and the Heartland Continuum of Care. As a landlord, I've always recognized the importance of providing housing, excuse me, affordable housing, but for years, I operated independently and wasn't connected with a formal housing support network. That changed when I met Community Housing Navigator Nick Dodson. Nick reached out to me with a cold call at first, I wasn't sure what to expect, but after hearing about the continuum and its work, I knew I wanted to be involved. Since then, I've had the privilege of partnering with Nick and other organizations like Helping Hands, Mercy Communities, Contact Ministries, and other organizations within the continuum, and it's been a game changer. By working together, we've been able to fill vacancies with tenants who really need the support while ensuring affordable housing stays available in our community. Myself and other community landlords see a tremendous value in collaborating with this network. The continuum has given me access to resources and a sense of community that's truly enriched the work I do. Thank you for giving me the chance to share this experience, and I look forward to continuing this partnership to help more people find stable housing.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a list of follow-up questions, but I do want to just share one thing, Amy, and this is something for Corporation Council. You guys are here today speaking in front of us because we're a body of ten, so when we're out in a community and it's more than three people, it's called a we're out in a community and it's more than three people, it's called a violation of an Open Meetings Act, especially, like you said, be more engaged, get more involved. So we cannot really do too much and speak all together, and all ten of us show up unless we have permission. So I'm going to ask Corporation Council to look into that, because you're saying you would like us to attend some of the monthly meetings and do some engagement, but if it's more than three of us, I want to make sure we don't get in trouble.
Sure, you don't necessarily have to do any engagement. It could be just as simple as joining our meeting and listening. Yeah, it's full of information, so I think that it'd be very beneficial, but I appreciate you reaching out on that.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll start first with, oh, and I'm sorry, one last thing. When we're done, could you all please stay just for one speaker to come up? I'm going to allow Kayla, we're going to go a little bit out of order, we're going to listen to my colleagues, and then we're going to have Kayla from the Sangamon Towers. She's here with some of our seniors today, and I would like them to speak while you all are sitting here, because I know y'all are not going to stay through the whole City Council meeting.
Point of order, Chair Lady, Chairwoman, excuse me. If you would like to have them, we all can hold and listen to everyone first and then ask our questions. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, so we'll allow Kayla to come up. She's going to speak. We have four of our seniors also signed up to speak, but she will just be speaking for, oh, three, but you'll just be speaking for everyone because we're going out of order.
Okay. Well, to speak for everyone, that's going to be a while.
Well, we got to keep it short a little bit.
My name's Kayla Watson. I've been a home healthcare worker for nineteen years. My dream job was a criminal defense lawyer, but pop needed help, so been in the field for nineteen years. I've been at the Sangamon Towers for over ten years. So I stand before you today to shed some light on an issue that has plagued our elders for the past six years, an issue that continues to rob them of their peace, safety, security, and what should be their sanctuary. For years, Sangamon Towers was a place of safety and comfort, a place where seniors could enjoy their golden years of their lives, free from the turmoil that so many of us face in today's world, but that has changed geolastically. Today, these residents are living in fear. Their homes, once a haven, has turned into battlegrounds invaded by unhoused individuals, many of them from the Washington Street Mission and St. John's breadline areas, who have created chaos, danger, trauma for our seniors to live there. Let me be clear, this is not a story of inconvenience. This is a crisis. Over the past six years, these unhoused individuals not have only trespassed on the property, but they have engaged in violent and criminal behaviors. Our seniors, vulnerable and in the need of protection, have been stabbed, robbed, and terrorized. These unhoused individuals have gained unauthorized entry into their building, taking over their stairwells, hallways, storage units. They've been found sleeping under the security desk in the lobby, in the hallways, the stairwells, even the entryways, and even the community room, places that should be sacred and safe. They have even busted out the windows in front and the back of the building to obtain entry to the building that is not theirs. Worse still, the seniors have now been shot at. One security guard has even been targeted, his vehicle has been vandalized, tires have been slashed, windows have been busted out, so he no longer protects the seniors that live in my building that I work in. These unhoused use drugs openly on the property, day and night. They leave the building inside and outside trashed, they leave their needles and their paraphernalia laying around, where our seniors, who have neuropathy of the feet, may not feel, they just stepped on a needle. These seniors live and walk in fear every day. They've engaged in inappropriate and illegal activities, exposing themselves, having sex in open areas, and physically assaulting seniors who dare to stand up for themselves. How can anyone feel safe in their home when facing such threats? Our seniors no longer have the joy of gathering around in their shared spaces. The patio and courtyard once had six picnic tables, two grills and outside activities, three tables, three umbrellas, and twelve chairs. They now have two tables and ten chairs, and that is a daily battle for them to use that on their patio that they pay rent for, because the unhoused come and take it. They move them over to the missions area where they have places to sit and whatever they want to do with them. They've even stolen the stuff. We used to have benches inside the entryways. They're gone. They're stolen. They can't use their library, they can't use their snack room, they can't use their community room, they cannot use the lobby restrooms if the office is not opened, because the unhoused had came in and destroyed everything, rubbed their feces on the walls, used the restroom on the floor, and leave their trash everywhere. So now my seniors, who pay rent and have worked their whole lives, have to live in a prison-like setting. The emotional and physical toll it has taken on the residents is unimaginable. They're no longer safe in their own homes, they live in constant fear, trapped in the walls that are supposed to protect them. Their mental well-being is at risk, and we cannot allow this to continue any longer. The unhoused individuals who gain unauthorized entry of the building have even walked in to some of my seniors' residence, because their doors are unlocked, have assaulted them, robbed them, and just put the fear in them, beat them, that that's had happened. I urge the authorities and the community leaders and our local organizations to step up. We need increased security, we need stricter enforcement of trespassing laws, and support for both the unhoused individuals and the seniors who are suffering from this crisis. It is a complex issue, and it can no longer be ignored and weight. The Washington Street Mission and the St. John's breadline need to control their guests, imply stricter policies for these unhoused individuals as well. After all, they're only near the Sangamon Towers because of the valuable resources that they offer to the unhoused. I've done some quick studies, real quick, just to pull some numbers out there for you guys. For the Washington Street Mission, I was unable to get the breadlines for you, but the Washington Street Mission, from September 24th to 2023 to September 24th of 2024, has 284 police calls, thirty-five of them have been violent, guns, weapons, shootings, nine of them have been for drugs, three overdoses, and six drug law violations. Seventy of the 284 calls were for suspicious persons, suspicious vehicles, and subjects removed. The remove of the subjects is sixty-five of the seventy. Eighty calls for violations of order protections, persons exposing themselves, disturbances, and mental subjects, but seventy-one of those eighty are disturbances that they're causing. Twenty-six of those phone calls have been for trespassing and criminal damage theft and items stolen recovered. Sixty-four of them have, or just whatever, so 2020 for Sangamon Towers, 123 police calls, 2024, 203, and it's only to September. Eleven of them were for shots fired for 2020 violent offenses, twenty of them for 2024. Three drug calls in 2022 and 2024. Forty-seven calls for 2020, sixty-seven calls for 2024 for suspicious persons. Twenty-six calls for violation of order protections and a person exposing themselves and disturbances of 2020, forty-four of them for 2024. Two calls for trespassing in 2020, sixteen in 2024, and thirty-four calls in 2020 just for miscellaneouses of patrolmen, following up, and fifty-two already just for the year of 2024. This has to stop. This needs action now. Our seniors can't wait. We need to come together, restore the safety and dignity of the Sangamon Towers and our seniors and our unhoused individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kayla.
And now, now we will go to my colleagues. We'll start with Alderman Rockford.
Thank you, Chair. Josh, to everybody that showed up tonight to speak, greatly appreciated. A ton of knowledge tonight. It's a learning experience for us, for me, you know, and I would be more than willing to come to meetings and meet with any of yous. Josh, I'll probably just reach out to you to get ahold of you and get numbers and this kind of stuff, but again, I appreciate you coming. I had a lot of questions and concerns, and enlightened me tonight, and thanks again. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Rockford. Alderman Carlson.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, Josh, I want to thank you, you know, for all the times we've talked over the years, including, I think, when we first met, when Alderman purchased, and I were on Capitol Township, and you first started talking about this. You know, coming in tonight's meeting, I think everybody here, you clarified a lot of things for me. I think I'm the one that asked a couple of weeks. I left the last couple of meetings thinking, hey, everybody seems to be working in a silo a little bit, and that leads me into, I mean, are you sort of the, for lack of a better term, are you sort of the mothership of the whole thing in making sure that sort of all the dots are connected with the various groups that we heard from tonight and/or some that weren't here? I think that's, that's sort of the question I get on the street, and it's, I don't know if it's frustrating, it gets frustrating because we're not sure, you know, really clear who's sort of in charge, and I've always been understanding from our conversation, maybe I'm wrong, but you guys are sort of like the lead in the whole thing.
Yeah, I mean, it's a complex social issue, and even the organization around it is complex, but at the end of the day, it's collective impact, right? So the continuum of care as a body has said, let's own this together, let's work together, and then our staff helps pull that together. So we're the energy behind all the collaborations and things that happen there, but...
So if you tell me everybody here is not working in their own separate silo, then I trust you and believe you, and if that's the case, then, I mean, obviously, I think all the information we got tonight is great, and it's all detailed. I'm just concerned that everybody is collaborating, communicating to keep everybody moving forward and on the same page to get to functional zero, because I think, you know, I know we're only a few years away from that possibility.
Well, I think a lot of times when folks get in an environment like that, we get defensive, right? We're not perfect. Our collaborations are not perfect. Sometimes funding necessitates collaboration. As you heard some partners say, they say, I see what we're trying to do, and I want to be a part of it. So, you know, collaboration is a tricky thing, and I'm not here to tell you that the whole system is perfect, but I'm telling you, and I think you heard several people say it, the way that these organizations are working together in this community, and I would, you could go to communities around us, too, and see if you see collaboration at the level you see it here, and I think you'd be hard-pressed to find it.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Chair. And Josh, since you're standing, I'll start with you. First of all, I want to thank everyone who came tonight to speak, all the staff who are represented here. You do a lot of work that goes unrecognized. Clearly, we've seen some of that, and you have additional challenges, and we see that and we recognize that. This is not an easy solution. I will say, where you gained a lot of respect for me tonight was coming in and talking about where you weren't strong. Not everyone wants to acknowledge, I mean, you came in here, we had more than one slide that said, we were bottom of the pile, and that's not an easy admission, because your work isn't easy. And so to say, to acknowledge that, and then to show us where you've come from there, is, to me, one of the strongest positions you can take. You acknowledge the weaknesses, you talked about gaps, and we know it's not perfect. We just heard. I mean, what's going on at Sangamon Towers is very concerning, and, you know, clearly another area where we need to have more conversations and more outreach, which is one of those gaps, our street outreach. So it's good that we have that information, and I just wanted to say, I really respect the fact that you did acknowledge that there has been change, but to me, it's encouraging. This is the first time I think we've had everyone come in and speak about this level of interconnection, the collaboration, the back and forth, which is critical, because otherwise, we'll miss more people. And so I really want to just thank you for that. I do have a couple of questions, and Chief, I actually have a question for you when I'm done with Josh, if you don't mind. So first of all, oh, first of all, to my colleagues, I've signed up for this newsletter. I've been getting it for at least a year or so, from the Heartland House. Absolutely, it's fabulous. There's a ton of information. Strongly encourage you to get it. It's a great way to stay on top of things, and you guys put out great information that way, so thank you for that. I appreciate that. Secondly, I do a lot of presentations myself, my day job. My last slide is always everyone's contact information. So if we could just get a consolidated list of contact information with agencies for everyone who participates in the continuum, I would really appreciate that. Let's see. Sorry, I'm going over, I write notes sometimes with my glasses on and sometimes off, so forgive me while I decipher my own handwriting. So one of the issues that's come up that I've heard that people have concerns about is the concept of the low-barrier shelter. And so what exactly is that definition of low barrier, and how many low-barrier shelters do we actually have in Springfield?
Yeah, I mean, low barrier is really, it's sort of, it's a spectrum, right? I mean, basically saying, as a person comes to your door, what prevents them from coming in, and the goal is to lower those barriers to every degree possible. Every transitional housing program, every shelter in our community has slightly different, slightly different rules on that. They're funded in all kinds of different ways, you know, and so they talk about that, but at the end of the day, it's, you know, those organizations have autonomy to, you know, talk about that, but also, street outreach workers, other folks advocate, I mean, there are, there's constant conversation about that. But the, at the end of the day, you know, I think Jill spoke about breathalizing and those kinds of things, right? So that would be a barrier, looking at criminal...
And that's not done at Helping Hands.
Right, did you know, right? Okay. You know, so that's, so Helping Hands has gone over this, over the last several years through a series of saying, okay, let's, how can we lower, how can we lower to get to where they are now?
So we have access, we have resources for people, but really, one of our biggest gaps is actually reaching those people on the streets where they are.
Yeah, and that being said, I mean, there are some populations who cannot access that shelter because of its proximity to the juvenile detention facility and those types of things. So, you know, that is, that's a real challenge.
So that's a concern that we need to probably look at, and when I say "we," I mean us as supportive partners. Again, I believe very strongly in having our frontline social service provider services, be with people who have more experience, and I have to say, that's another thing I just want to point out, the continued emphasis on lived experience and bringing people who have experienced some very low points in their lives and giving value to that as part of the input and the outreach that we provide to our unhoused community, I really strongly applaud all of you for that. It's really critical. I heard a couple of times, you know, you meet people where they are, and valuing that experience, it's not a great experience, not all experiences are fun to gain, but if they can be used in a way that, leveraged in a way that benefits our entire community, I really very much appreciate that that is a priority, and I don't know how, you got us some extra slides and then skipped one at the very end that I was excited for you to include, which was your Lived Experience Advisory Board. Am I saying it right? Flipping through things too quickly. So, and I just, again, these are things that our community is doing, and I know we're not seeing the results that we want yet. I know we're not. I get texts almost daily about the Ballyvahn apartments and people going in there, and they're staying in there, and they're coming out, and we've, and everyone in this room can, up here, can talk about those experiences, but to see progress and to know where you're going, especially from where you've been, is really heartening. And so thank you for the detail that went into this. Thank you for your patience, because there have been some very ugly conversations in this room. I know this is not an easy topic, and it can get very heated and very emotional, and we have some seniors right behind you, and we want you to be safe in your housing, too. There's no line between who gets to be safe and who doesn't. And so you have partners here who are working for this, and I thank you for that, and of course, encourage, you know, maybe some more specific detailing of where those additional needs are so that we can help with those. So thank you for that, and that is actually the end of my questions, and Chief, and I know you did, I know you were kind of in and out of the room, I don't think I'm going to hit you with anything too unexpected. First of all, I want to thank you, you sent us the email today for the breakout and the funding that we get through SEED, and it's hundreds of thousands of dollars going to organizations that are doing the frontline work. But we heard something tonight that kind of raised my eyebrows and causes some concern for me, and that is that the consultants that we are, that the police department is working with through SEED, don't participate in HMIS. And when we're talking about the need for collaboration and coordination of care and ensuring that we're getting these accurate numbers... That causes some concern for me. It's, I'm wondering, and I know you're not the consult, you're not the ones doing that. I'm wondering if you know why that's not happening or if it's something that we could talk about later at more detail.
I would recommend we talk about later in more detail. I don't have any information on HMIS as far as who has access to it and who doesn't. That's nothing that the police department controls.
And I know it's not your control and that's why I was kind of like, let's soft play this one. But I do want you to see, what we've got here is a large group that has that coordination. Shannon has access to HMIS. If we've got, and based off the budget numbers that I saw, an organization that's getting a fair amount of money to also be part of our solutions. I want to make sure that that information is being shared with every one of our continuum members. And that if HMIS is how we're coordinating that, we need to make sure that they're participating in it. That's, so we can talk later and I'm actually around a little bit next week, so maybe I'll come in and we'll have a sit down. Thank you Chief, very much. And that's all that I can read off of my notes Chair, so thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Gregory.
Yes, thank you. Real quickly, so Mr. Sable, thank you for the meeting last week. I met with you and many of the things that you presented, you did a good job explaining in layman's terms. So, and I would just say that, you know, we originally got here the week before all of this blew up, so to speak. We had just awarded the continuum $250,000. So, and what we have been trying to do is let the professionals do their work, right? And we wouldn't be here, right? And I think the key word that we talked about today was communication, communication. We, you know, going back to the original situation, this young lady wore five. She tried to do something because she's getting hammered by her constituents who are riding down Fifth Street. And they're complaining about this issue, just like I get about certain individuals' mom. So she tried to act, right? Now, while I didn't agree with that, I understand why she tried to do that. But the communication between us as the city, I'm going to take myself out, I'm one of the 10 Aldermen too. So us as the city and the continuum of care didn't happen, right? So, and we have board members on there. So we have to, we have to just be honest on how we got to this situation, right? And the number one thing was about us communicating between us as the city and you as the continuum of care. And what problems we are facing from our constituents, right? We didn't deliver that very well to you to get recommendations back on what we should do. We've been here before on some things and some ordinance that we wanted to try. We caught some heat then, right? And we had to get with the ACLU and Massage and Language for, on a safety purpose, of people panhandling in busy intersections. It has slowed down. We don't have that as much. Every once in a while, there's some people out there and we address it as we can. So that's the biggest thing is just communication. We, you know, we've seen some other moves, you know, gone and the continuum of care didn't know about, right? So we have to communicate better on that and then I think less of this will happen. I will say that I'm happy to hear the jobs program. I think that's very, very important. I know, you know, some individuals who would like to work. I'm definitely happy to hear that you don't have to have a degree to be outreach worker and to give back to the community. That was sort of a blow to not only me, but many people I know that works hard in that field. And I'm very interested Chief in getting with you on the SEED program and really trying to help each individual. Each individual agency that works with you have more outreach workers and more people who live experience and who can relate to people. To try to get people where they need to be, you know? I think every organization that spoke today does great work, does great work. What we are struggling with as a council from a city perspective is when we get calls about individuals who don't want to go to the services. Who don't want to go into the shelter and those problems. And I think those are small issue, but they're a big issue because people see it. I, you know, I went to Fifth and North Grand and, you know, there's people, you know, from the community riding by, taking film and all this craziness. Because they want to put it out there that we're just allowing anything to go on in our communities and we're not. But we also understand the tough battle that not only you, you're going through, but as well as the people are going through. So I don't want that to get lost. The work that every, every organization does is great. And we, we're trying to focus on, like when you came up, the last time when we gave you, I said, Josh, next year I want to see some outreach services. And that's no knock against you, that's just being real. And I think a lot of times we're not real on what our problem is, so we can really work on it. And if it's money from the city, and I won't call her name, but I appreciate during my stops, one lady was like, you know, the city's awful hard on, you know, the questioning of the organizations, because we only give a blimp of the money that you need. So I don't ever want to come off from my seat or two, and I don't think any of our councils, as we're coming down on you. We have caught a lot of heat over the last few weeks about this situation. And we all know that, you know, as things come, then we're going to get to looking and say, hey, well, what are we doing with our funding? And is it working and things of that nature? And you guys have done a great job really explaining and dispelling some of the rumors and misinformation. I wish our hot team was here, our homeless outreach team was here. I know one of the things that they said that keeping our numbers is up a little bit is from people getting in housing and getting put in out. Now, that's no fault of your own, but we need to understand how much that occurs and how we can, you know, work with that. Not from a city perspective, but, you know, how can we put focus on that? And anything I can do to help, and I'm sure anything of our colleagues, we'll do. You know, I'll get out in the field with you. But those things are important. I don't want it to get lost. That a majority of it is our, just like census, hard account census, this is a hard problem. We've got some people that just don't want to go to shelter for whatever reason. And I think substance abuse, and I know some of our organizations got some of that, but I think we need more of that for those who do. For those who do. Not everyone does. So I thank you for educating us on that. Other than that, I'll continue my conversations out in the community with you all and I thank you for your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, I've been an Alderman for nine years now and we've had a lot of, a lot of presentations. I learned more in an hour and a half, well, two hours now, at this than I've learned in any of the other presentations that have come forward. And I appreciate it. I was kind of hard on you last week and I will say this, I apologize Josh. You know, you came, came through here and, you know, you taught me some things. As a matter of fact, I'd like to sit down with you next week sometime. I'd like to get with you right after this and we'll get a time and like come and sit down. And, because I've got a bunch of questions, you know, some of the concerns that have been brought up is that sometimes we get, take people to housing and the housing isn't fit to live in. And, you know, what are we doing about that? I'm real, I appreciate the people that came in that do the street outreach. That's, that's number one in my book. We got to have that. And I just have a question, does, do you guys have a meeting with the other groups that have street outreach? And our hot team, you know, once a week or once a month or something where you guys can? What I'm afraid of is you guys are all touching the same people and there's people on the outskirts that aren't, aren't being seen or being touched. Is that something that can be done, Josh? And you can?
I could go, I could do one minute, because I know you have more. But that, so that, if you look at that slide, that outreach task group is that. So they meet every two weeks, they're working through a by names list of folks. And that includes, not everyone makes every meeting, but all those organizations are on there to say, oh, I'm working with this person. You know, this person doesn't want to work with me, will they work with you? So all of that level of collaboration is happening there.
Right. Okay, thank you. And then I would just ask you to work with the folks at Sangamon Towers. Maybe get together after this, exchange information and try to help these people out. You know, that, I understand where they're coming from. You know, that's not right that the elderly folks there have to, have to live in fear like that. And, you know, and I'm sure that our police have been involved in it a lot, but we've got to come up with a solution. I'm sure, I'm confident that you work with Josh, they'll, and the people from Washington Street, they'll, will get this solved, all right? And I'll just, the rest of my questions, I'll, I want to meet with you next week and we'll sit down.
Love to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Williams.
Yes, thank you Madam Chair. And thank you Continuum of Care and Heartland for, I've learnt a lot tonight. I've heard a lot of good stuff. But I'm the Alderman that says the continuum has failed Springfield. I still do think you failed in outreach and some of the other areas dealing with low barrier individuals, sexual offenders and people like that. Because I've heard a lot of good stories, a lot of good work, but yet, we still have campers. But yet, we still have old guys sleeping inappropriately in front of closed down storefronts. But yet, we got all these agencies, all this money, all these numbers, and this is what I'm going to hear. Sangamon Towers, I got high rises. They're the same way, the same thing. That's not to say you guys haven't done a good job, but I got to share with you what I'm getting calls about. My Dirksen Parkway ain't the same Dirksen Parkway no more. Helping Hands, yeah, I know about the low hires and the people that got a few jobs and the relationship got a little better. But I can start at Big Lots and go all the way down to Clear Lake, they not happy. The businesses are not happy. Signs on the door of customers only, this, that. So now they're doing all this outside, not saying it's even Helping Hands. The population of what we are calling homeless is so complex and so, so much of a variety. That, like I was sharing with you Josh in the meeting, my couples that rent by the hour at all these motels up and down on North Dirksen. They're not homeless every day, but they have these moments when they ain't getting work and the money ain't there, the check ain't there. So they are begging all the parking lots from Stevenson to Clear Lake, trying to get money to rent for the hour. You know, so there's a lot of different types of homelessness that exists that I'm not sure yet if the continuum even is tapping in. Because all these situations still exist. The calls are still going to come in about, so if all those agencies exist. All these good programs exist and everybody mentioned outreach pretty much, but the low barrier problem is still there. Sex offenses, those guys, they're out there. They're desperate. They need help. And they're harassing ordinary citizens. They're doing things inappropriate in the community. Doesn't mean you guys ain't doing a good job, but it's still a problem, probably not just for Springfield, but because of law. You know, I get tired of beating up on the police about, you know, different things about that. Because I'm trying to understand both sides of the coin. But I'm not going to sit there and say, because you guys came, gave a beautiful presentation, showed the good work. I learnt so much from the meeting and I definitely learnt a whole lot tonight, but we not there. We're going to walk out the door and I'm going to drive home and see those guys still, where they at? Whether it's rain, whatever's going, why? All this help, all these agencies, we still got campers. We can go North Grand right now. They still, why? So some still ain't coming together? I applaud that, somebody said it earlier, I think maybe to Alderwoman, at least we are now communicating and starting to talk about it. Instead of talking at each other, there's a whole nother group, they busy tonight, they over there beating up on Sangamon County Board. But that group needs to hear this. They need to be in here. So we can again, communicate and start getting rid of some of those myths that you talked about. Some of those misstatements that are out there in the public when they come and beat us up about, that we know pretty much ain't accurate. So I thank everybody for coming. I thank you for your work. But it ain't as pretty as we can make it just because our individual program numbers may have gotten better. We may have improved since 2019. I don't know what's happening in the United States, but everywhere the numbers are going up. And we're getting more and more and more. And I'm meeting all these guys from all these different places wondering, how the heck do you get to Springfield, Illinois? Homeless and you need all these services? So bear with me, correct me when you hear me make those statements Josh, I know I didn't make you happy. But that's, that frustration that came out from my constituents that I was passing on. Because they're still going to see those things and say, so what Alderman, you had good presentations tonight, good information, but here's our reality. Thank you. Thank you Madam Chair.
Do you want to respond Josh?
If I could, please. Again, and that's, that is part of what we did try to tell you, the system is not perfect, right? And you all, you know, I know the things that you were hearing from your constituents and then some of the things I don't know. And so what I, what I would say is that you all have access to us, you have access to the Continuum of Care Board. If there's concerns in your wards that you're not sure are being addressed or seen, you have access to the Strategy Board. If you want to talk to that group about, you know, how are we doing strategically on outreach? Are we really growing those resources so that when this happens, somebody can respond? So that is the invitation I would give you. As these issues pop up, you don't just have to throw them up here. You know, call us, you know, we'll get you on a meeting, you can share the concern, you know. All the, all the folks can, can help to see what kind of response. And, you know, I would say one of the areas where we absolutely need to prove is, you know, is that, that gaps analysis, right? We should be able to tell you like, hey, we don't, you know, Roy told you, there's over $2 million financial gap in the house of folks that you're talking about, right? You know, so beyond that though, what are the other gaps? And, you know, how are we trying to fill those gaps? Where are we pursuing the funding? Our intention's not to come to the city every time we need funding. There's grants, there's all these things that we're trying to go after. And we need to make sure, you know, those communications need to happen so you know, we're seeing the gaps and we're doing what we can. And then if you say, hey, I want to introduce a $2 million ordinance for this work, we would welcome that and help you do that. But, so.
Thank you Josh. Alderman Redpath.
Josh, I got to say, you know, I've sat on this city council for 30 years. I can tell you that I've seen the low, low, low times that we had. And I've seen how it's built up over the, over the years. When we had the Tent City some years back, it was very tragic for everybody. I think it opened the eyes that we had to do something. The continuum jumped in gear with all these, all these folks to help get that thing rolling. It's, we're on the right track, but I hear from my constituents, I mean, from my fellow Aldermen about problems that are coming up. Alderman Gregory, about the Fifth and North Grand situation. We don't want those folks to suffer out there. We really don't. I mean, no matter how many times they come in and try to beat up on us, it doesn't bother me. I can't be intimidated. The bottom line is, is that we want to find a solution and we want to help you find a solution and try to help everybody do that. Alderman Hanauer and I had about a half hour long, tough conversation with the county board chairman last night. And we are, he and I are both going to sit down and talk to you this, next week. We want to talk about how we can help and how we can move things along, because we really want people to be safe. We want them to be secure. We want them to have housing. The one thing I want to say is the folks back here in the maroon shirts, and I don't know if you all got the same shirts on, but God love you. God love you. Hits me there, so.
Thank you Alderman Redpath. And I would like to wrap up with saying, thank you all each for coming out together to present to us. And I think this is something we've been wanting to see for a while. I think Alderwoman Conley called it out, since she's been up here, this is the first time we've seen all of you all together. Coming to speak to us and break down what each of your agencies do and then how it comes together too. One, excuse me sir, I'm talking as chair and you would have to wait till the end of the meeting. I would like to continue with, if we can get something like this more than once a year, this would be so helpful. I think even since I've been here, and this is my fourth year now, that I've never heard so much that I heard today. I want to go back to Ms. Jill. I definitely agree with you when you say we need more landlords. I'm going to talk about the NIMBY, the not in my backyard. I was one of the Alderwomen who had pushed for a project that's coming that you all are going to be stepping in and helping with, where Sportsman Lounge is. So now we can say that's also going to be increased. But guess what? That neighborhood did not want that at all. My colleagues supported me and pushing for that so that we could create more housing. And these are for individuals that's transitioning from being homeless and wanting to sustain life on their own, but still need a little bit of help. So we need to be able to go out to the neighborhoods and talk at the neighborhood associations. And I don't know if that's the whole entire group or if that's just you that would come and express and explain how the program works and how there's accountability in there, but I think that would help. And then lastly, we just had a big meeting with majority of Sangamon Towers seniors. I started to cry. I care about my seniors. I have five high rises in Ward Five. And Sangamon Towers and near north is taking a real, they're having a real hard time right now. And I don't even want to get emotional when you have women telling me that they're being abused because there are people coming from the bread line. So when those services are done. they're people coming from the breadline, so when those services are done, there's some type of gap going on right now. When the services are done, they don't have anywhere to go, and when we do our farmer's market, multiple activities that I'm doing over there, we have to ask the police to come in and help so that the seniors can come down and actually enjoy outside. When we have some of our unhoused individuals snatching chairs away from them, we can't expect them to be fighting back and forth. So something's going on right now, and I would ask that I'm more than happy to facilitate like we did with SEIU and our seniors to have Washington Mission and Josh Sable with Heartland Continuum of Care to do a meeting together. So please let me know how I can help with facilitating that, and I think that would be really, really helpful and would get things started. That's why we went out of order tonight so that you guys could hear, because like you said, Josh, you don't hear this stuff. You don't hear what's going on with the community. Lincoln Park was here last week to speak because they have talked about this for over two years now with Fifth and North Grand, and I'm sorry that I may have came off aggressively when I asked you before approving the $250,000, what are you all doing about Fifth and North Grand because I don't know how often you all go out there every day or every week. I only get what Officer Newman and Shannon is sharing with me because guess what? That's the first call that I'm making when the constituents are sending me an email, text message, or a video. So this is a lie, and I think this is what started a lot of this conversation, and that's why you all are here today too, because I heard almost every agency make a correction that they heard from last week. So trying to figure out how we can get everybody in one room and we can talk about this and find the solutions. I mean, we're getting hammered on social media. If you can provide some of this information, our communications director is in the back of the room, Director Haley, so that she can put some of this out there. I know you all are starting to share that on social media, what you all do too, but let's get more collaborative with also the city as well to help get the information out for you all. I thank you all for coming tonight, it is now 7:37, and we need to start the city business too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Josh.
Sorry.
Okay, you got, okay, okay, try. This is, take care of yourself.
Okay.
Are we on break?
Let's go.
Are we on a break?
Can we have some orders so we can hear and continue the meeting?
Thank you.
Next, we will have ordinances tabled or remaining in committee. Mr. Clerk, could you please read those ordinances?
2024-178, 2024-239, 2024-333.
I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other that need to be brought out?
Oh, yeah. Are there any ordinances that need to be brought out, or should we continue? Okay. Ordinances for consideration, committee consideration.
CWLP, 2024-399. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of a Ford 250 pickup truck from Marl Brothers Ford Incorporated from state contract in an amount not to exceed $57,989 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2024-401. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of inventory items for Unit 4 pulverizers from Wood Group USA Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $195,966 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Public Works, 2024-402. An ordinance approving the plan for a large-scale development of project capital for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2024-401. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of inventory items for Unit 4 pulverizers from Wood Group USA Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $195,966 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2024-406. An ordinance accepting the low bid and authorizing the execution of contract number PW25-32 with Paul Street Tree Farms LLC to furnish 150 tree plantings in an amount of $65,700 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, and we also have discussion. Alderman Redpath.
Director, if you could, on both of these next two ordinances, can you tell us what's the distribution of these trees?
Are these gumball trees?
Yeah, we're putting gumball trees in your ward, Larry.
All in Ward Four.
Over my dead body. Alderman, these two contracts, the first one is for 150 trees to be planted throughout the city at locations that are being identified now. The second ordinance is for 150 trees under the U.S. Forestry Grant that we got that is primarily in the northeast quadrant.
Okay, so is it replacing, when we're taking down the dead trees or gumball trees, are you replacing those?
It's a variety. We've got a lot of stretches of right-of-way where we don't really have any trees right now, and we've been making contact with the neighborhood folks to see, would you like to have a tree where there is no tree or a tree has come down, would you like to see that?
Somebody butchered about 60 trees out to Lake, they went in with a chainsaw and cut them down, and around the zoo and a couple houses out there, the police is looking to try to find who did it, but is that something that they could be used for?
That would be lake services, so I think.
Good move. All right, stay up here, because I got another question for you later.
Okay, you done, Alderman Redpath?
Yes.
Okay, Alderman Carlson.
Thank you, Chair. Director, you said some where the trees are being planted, it's being identified right now, what's the criteria?
Basically, if there's space for it, if there's no trees, or we're replacing a tree that's come down in the last couple of years.
I mean, are we utilizing the zone managers? Do we, can we put a request in?
We're asking everybody.
Can we put a request in, or how's that?
Yeah, we're working with the zone managers, the homeowners' associations, the neighborhood groups, and basically we're trying to identify areas that don't have a lot of trees, but if somebody's interested in tree, we'd certainly entertain that. But we got to plant 150, and that's actually a lot of trees.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Chair. Director, just real quickly, I just want to point out, my first couple of years on council, I spent a lot of time reporting ash trees that were, that had been, were dying or dead, so just to kind of hop on, we should get these possible addresses to you, to our zone managers. If we have constituents who are interested, should they contact us and then we go through you, or can we just?
You could send it to the zone manager, or you could send it straight to me.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. It's exciting to see the replanting. I'm sorry, I'm sorry that Alderman Rockford's not getting all the sweet gums that he wanted, but.
No, 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 set him out west. Rob will take him.
And I will say, so when I, in one of my meetings with the arborist, I understand these are, it's a mix of trees?
Yes.
And do you have, for people who are interested in getting a tree, do you have recommendations for people who have power lines over them? Are there kind of limitations on what you're doing with that, or you're like?
Well, we're staying away from maples because we have way too many, we're also staying away from oaks, but we have a wide variety, a lot of them are flowering trees as well.
Okay, thank you, so, but just I'm saying, like, if I have a resident who has power lines, when they, if they want to have a tree, there's going to be a conversation about.
They should let us know that, yeah.
Okay, want to make sure that's included. Thank you very much, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Director Fuchs, with a few of the questions, can you just send something out in general to us, who to send people to? I know you said.
Sure, we'll be glad to do that.
Yeah, just in how the process works, so when we get calls, we'll be able to send them off to you too. There is no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2024-407. An ordinance accepting the low bid and authorizing the execution of contract number PW25-33 with Paltry Farms LLC to furnish 150 tree plantings to be planted as part of American Forests Grant Program in the amount of $65,700 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, there's no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2024-408. An ordinance amending ordinance number 328-09-24 to award both Traffic Control Corporation and Traffic Control Products as the lowest bidders for the contract number PW25-05-15 for video imaging vehicle tracking and detection systems in an amount not to exceed $206,250 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, and we do have discussion. Alderman Redpath.
Could you just explain this program?
This is upgrading the video image cameras that basically recognize the approach of a vehicle. It just, and it triggers the signal control.
Oh, so it's all, what are you, on specific intersections, or what's?
Basically, we're replacing them where we have them, and then there are a lot of new intersections that will be getting upgrades.
We always get, we always get requests of, do we have a camera at those intersections? Are those, are those cameras for traffic observation, and are they?
They do not capture an image, all they do is identify that there is a vehicle at the appropriate spot, and then it triggers the signal.
It's not like our license plate readers?
No, no.
All right.
It does not capture the image.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, and I just wanted to clarify also, this is not a red light camera system.
No, ma'am.
We don't have authority for that in Springfield.
No, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
And this is basically a correction of the ordinance that was originally introduced, it only included Traffic Control Corporation, there are two companies we're making these purchases from, and it adds Traffic Control Products. They're actually two different companies.
You good?
Thank you, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Director Fuchs, and, oh, I'm sorry, one more, Alderman Carlson, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Is this where we bring up the dreaded word light synchronization? Does this have anything to do with that or not? Are we looking at that, or?
It's, no.
Is this a foot into the door?
Quick answer, no, this doesn't have anything to do with that. Synchronization is something that comes up quite often in our traffic signal modernization program, ultimately, there will be a capability of being able to do that.
So this helps maybe down that path a little bit?
Oh, sure, it would be a part of that system, but.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. There is no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2024-409. An ordinance authorizing execution of preliminary engineering services agreement with Luxmuller Group Incorporated for preliminary design and engineering services PE-I, PE-II for the Isles Avenue widening from West White Oaks Drive to Veterans Parkway, Project MFT number 24-00500-00-WR in an amount not to exceed $571,764 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, and we do have discussion. Alderwoman, no triana.
Thank you, Chair. So, maybe we already addressed this, but I thought we were also going to see a engineering agreement for West White Oaks and Headley?
We're working on that, yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's a whole nother project.
Because to me, that one's like really pressing.
They're both bad.
But, yeah. So we'll see that in like the next few months or what have you?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. There is no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2024-410. A resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax funds in the amount of $571,764 may be used for preliminary design engineering services for Isles Avenue widening from West White Oaks Drive to Veterans Parkway, Project MFT Section 24-00500-00WR for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have, I'm sorry, Alderman Williams.
No, it's a mixed orders.
Oh, you clicked it too fast.
2024-411. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing the execution of contract number PW25-08-25 with S. Schaefer Excavating Incorporated to furnish abatement and demolition of 35 court-ordered demolitions within the city of Springfield in an amount not to exceed $692,450 for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, we also have discussion. Alderman Williams.
Director, or?
Yes, sir.
I don't know, I sent you a list of properties.
Yes.
Pertaining to demolition. Did we get answers on those at all, or those addresses? And while she's coming, I will say this, so I am so happy about this because I really wish it would have happened before Bill Springfield, before Wednesday, because a lot of those houses are coming down in the Bills Berry area from 2021. When I first got on the council, I'm still just trying to understand this long process, so I'm hoping you can answer what I'm inquiring about as far as the houses.
I'm happy to, I came just for you, Alderman.
Oh, did you? Oh, I appreciate, well, the mayor give you a bonus.
I'm happy to answer all of these questions. Do you have a preference as to whether you want me to go through that list first, or, okay?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Sure, the first one is the 4004 Maria, actually. That one is on this list of 35.
Great, great, I'm glad to hear that.
2001 East South Grand Avenue, we just recently acquired from the county tax sale, that will be coming on the next set.
Great news, okay.
2033 East South Grand, that's the address for that one. The, we do not have a court order on this one yet, they have a court date coming up on November 6th.
Did they have a court date like a Friday ago?
No, they did not. Originally, we were working with them toward repair, we had an agreement to repair, that agreement was broken, and that is why we are now taking them to court on November 6th, and that will be their first court date.
Thank you.
The 2235 East Cook, we're going to have to follow up with you on that one because that's not an address that's actually showing as a valid address.
Okay, so Mitch knows, Mitch should know what I'm talking about.
Okay, yeah, he's on vacation this week, so we will get with Mitch when he returns.
Oh, okay, okay.
1105 North 14th, so this one, we're going to have to send an inspector back out on, it's not currently written up as a demolition, but it is an occupancy-prohibited building where the owner is deceased, so the last time we were out there was in 2022, so it's time for us to go back out there again. The very last one, 1101 North 14th, I'm actually a bit surprised by this one, and we'll have to follow up as well, because they did a rehab and received a certificate of occupancy in January of '23, so I'm not quite sure what's going on there.
Well, I think it's just squatters, but I'll let the inspectors tell you.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And then with respect to kind of this delayed process, I'm happy to answer that too. So when I started with the city of Springfield in December of 2019, almost five years ago now, we had a very significant backlog of demolitions that had been sitting on the list for five, six.
Pertaining to demolition. Did we get answers on those? At all? Are those addresses? And while she's coming, I will say this, so I am so happy about this because I really wish it would have happened before Bill Springfield, before Wednesday, Saturday, because a lot of those houses are coming down in the Hills Berry area from twenty-twenty-one. When I first got on the council, I'm still just trying to understand this long process. So I'm hoping you can answer what I'm inquiring about as far as the houses.
I'm happy to. I came just for you, Alderman.
Oh, did you? Oh, I appreciate. Well, the mayor give you a bonus.
I'm happy to answer all of these questions. Do you have a preference as to whether you want me to go through that list first or? Okay. Sure. The first one is the four thousand four Maria, actually. That one is on this list of thirty-five.
Great. I'm glad to hear that.
Two thousand one East South Grand Avenue, we just recently acquired from the county tax sale. That will be coming on the next set.
Great news. Okay.
Twenty thirty-three East South Grand, that's the address for that one. The, we do not have a court order on this one yet. They have a court date coming up on November sixth.
Did they have a court date like a Friday ago?
No, they did not. Originally, we were working with them toward repair. We had an agreement to repair. That agreement was broken, and that is why we are now taking them to court on November sixth, and that will be their first court date.
Thank you.
The twenty-two thirty-five East Cook, we're going to have to follow up with you on that one because that's not an address that's actually showing as a valid address. So we'll work with you on that.
Mitch should know what I'm talking about.
Okay, yeah, he's on vacation this week, so we will get with Mitch when he returns.
Oh, okay, okay.
Eleven oh five North Fourteenth. So this one, we're going to have to send an inspector back out on. It's not currently written up as a demolition, but it is an occupancy prohibited building where the owner is deceased. So the last time we were out there was in twenty-twenty-two, so it's time for us to go back out there again. The very last one, eleven oh one North Fourteenth. I'm actually a bit surprised by this one, and we'll have to follow up as well because they did a rehab and received a certificate of occupancy in January of twenty-three. So I'm not quite sure what's going on there.
I think it's just squatters, but I'll let inspectors tell you.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And then with respect to kind of this delayed process, I'm happy to answer that, too. So when I started with the city of Springfield in December of twenty nineteen, almost five years ago now, we had a very significant backlog of demolitions that had been sitting on the list for five, six years, and it really bothered, bothered me. So, and then we, of course, had COVID, and we all know what that did to the entire world. So there was a big push at the end of twenty-twenty-one, early twenty-twenty-two for me to file hundreds of cases and get that list cleaned up. So currently, we have a whopping eighty-six outstanding court orders for demolition. So this thirty-five is the first in what will be, end up being a series of three. As many of you know, Mitchell Flynn is currently the Housing Division Manager, and prior to that, it was Daryl Harris. When Daryl departed in twenty-twenty-three, his position went vacant for probably six to nine months, if I had to guess. I'm not sure. And then when Mitch came in, you know, he wasn't necessarily familiar with the process and everything that went into, from court order to physically tearing down these buildings. So it was a learning process for him. You know, we had, he had to go through and figure out which ones did we have court orders on, which did we not? Which ones, the utilities were disconnected, what ones still needed utilities get disconnected, and so on and so forth. So it's been a process to get to this point, but now that he's done it once, we are very confident that going forward, we won't have to wait this long between court orders and when we actually tear them down.
I appreciate it. Just verify me one more time on that, that twenty, on South Grand, the opposite end of twenty oh one.
Two thousand block.
The two thousand one or the twenty thirty-three?
Twenty thirty-three. Is that the official address? Because CWOP and the departments have different addresses.
Sure. The twenty thirty-three is the one that's recognized by the Sangamon County Tax Assessor's Office.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Real quick.
I'm about to call on you, Alderman Hanhour.
How many, how many demos have we done this year? Because I remember when we first started, I think, we were lucky to get like fifteen.
She's, she's knocking them out.
I mean, seriously, we were lucky to get fifteen a year, twenty a year.
So, so far this year, we have, I've gotten several court orders, but as far as the city having physically torn them down, we have not done that many. I don't have that exact number with me, but I probably only want to say maybe a half a dozen, and those were more of the emergency type ones that our crews did in-house.
Because obviously, my big concern is that's, these vacant houses, it's getting cold. We'll get squatters in there, they start a fire, and then we end up with a firefighter getting hurt battling the fire, and that's not something we ever want to see. So, thank you.
Thank you. There is no further discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it.
General City Business, twenty twenty-four, four twelve. An ordinance authorizing payment in the amount of thirty-six thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and sixty-three cents to Andrew Sandhouse, a current city of Springfield firefighter, for settlement of workman's compensation claim for case number twenty-three dash WC dash zero-one-two-five-eight-one.
Move for consent.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-four, four thirteen. An ordinance amending ordinance four-fifty dash ten dash seventeen and three-thirteen dash zero-eight dash eighteen to expand the first responder and U.S. veteran home purchase and new construction grant program utilizing tax increment finance funds in an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
Motion for consent.
Thank you. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Chair?
Yes.
I was just wondering if one of the sponsors would like to share what this ordinance does?
Of course. Would you like to speak on it?
Sure.
Okay. Alderman Gregory?
So, this is an existing program that has been in ordinance for some time, even before me. So what we did is took a look at this ordinance for several reasons. We have, you know, my particular ward, nursing, nursing field is a field that we see a large increase of young ladies and young women going into. We wish for more young men, but we want to make that push. But we, you know, and as far as, as far, I shared the Far East Tiff with Alderman Williams, and also this bounces over to the Enos Park area as well, and we all have tips. And we, what we, what the goal of this is, is to keep those well-paying jobs in our, in the community as such, as where those tips lie.
And so this gives an incentive to help them buy a home?
Buy or rehab home, yes, ma'am.
Wonderful.
Alderwoman Conley, too. So I have Dr. Navid. He's doing a four million dollar project of development on Walnut for nursing students and thought that it would be great. And also with Illinois State Nursing Program coming here, that pipeline is running very smoothly and at capacity. And we want to try to have them to stay in the neighborhood and purchase homes, too, so that they could walk back and forth to work at either one of the hospitals. So we thought this would be great to bring forward. So I thank y'all for the support.
Thank you very much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-four, four fourteen. An ordinance authorizing payment of two-hundred-and-six thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty dollars to Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services Incorporated for renewal of the annual premium for coverage of certain commercial properties for the Office of Budget and Management.
We have a motion and a second. Alderman Gregory, are you still up for discussion?
No, no, no. I didn't take it down.
No discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-four, four fifteen. An ordinance authorizing execution of redevelopment agreement with Springfield Art Association for the financial assistance for the property located at one oh one through one oh five North Fifth Street, utilizing central area tax increment finance funds in an amount of eight thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-one dollars for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion for consent.
We have a motion and a consent. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-four, four sixteen. An ordinance authorizing execution of professional services agreement with Downtown Springfield Incorporated to provide economic growth within the downtown district of the city of Springfield in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion for consent.
We have a motion and a second. There's no discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-four, four seventeen. An ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-six dollars from the capital equipment fund bond revenue for the purchase of three interceptors from Dana Safety Supply Incorporated for the Springfield Fire Department.
Motion to adopt amendment number one.
We have a. Corporation counsel.
Yeah, so really quickly, the ordinance, the original ordinance also contained a supplemental appropriation. However, the, this and purchase and the next purchase that we're going to discuss were budgeted by FIRE in their, in their original budget that was approved, so there's no supplemental appropriation needed. So this ordinance removes that appropriation.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion to consent as adopted, as amended.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-four, four eighteen. An ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of one million, seventeen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars from the capital equipment fund bond revenue for the purchase of Pierce Enforcer Pumper from McQueen Equipment LLC for the Springfield Fire Department.
Move for amendment to adopt amendment number one.
We have a corporation counsel.
Same, the amendment serves the same function. It removes the supplemental appropriation.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion to, to, for consent as amended.
We have a motion and a second, and we have discussion. Alderman Gregory?
I just wanted to ask, these are on consent. I'm fine with that. Do we know how many, how much more equipment purchases that we have going on? I know we were, you know, we're doing a good job getting new trucks and things of that nature. We should be bought now.
What was your question, Alderman?
So how many more replacements and things of, whether it's fire trucks that we drive in or?
Sure. So the problem, like, we bought that large purchase a couple of years ago. That only really brought half our fleet up to standard. So this is kind of starting to have a maintenance plan for our entire fleet, where if we just kind of buy one every year, we can stay ahead of the expiration dates, basically. So this is, you know, why we're doing it. But we have to remember, and if you think back to budget time, we actually asked for three, and really, that's because there's still a four-year waiting period on these. So just because we're buying this today, we're not getting this for four years. And so, you know, maybe come budget time again, you might see us ask for a few too many that, you know, it might look like we're asking for too many of them, but it's because that's really four years worth of purchases. So that's.
Just wanted to understand and.
No problem.
I appreciate. You know when my fire station on Eleventh Street opened, why I got you up here?
Very soon.
Very soon.
Come, let me know when you want a tour.
All right, we'll talk soon.
Okay, there's no further, oh, sorry, Alderman Williams.
So do they build as they order them?
Yes. Well, they build, they build them eventually once you order them. They still.
So they don't start on them until somebody orders one?
Correct. There are some stock units that they'll build, but you pay a lot more for a stock unit, believe it or not, than you do for a custom.
Okay, and then there's a waiting list, is what he's saying.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
And they, and they can fit underneath the railroad passageway?
Yes, they can.
Okay, so there's no further discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-four, four nineteen. An ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars from unbudgeted unappropriated state asset forfeiture fund balance for the Springfield Police Department.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and no discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-four, four twenty. An ordinance authorizing a one-year renewal of contract RFQ MA twenty-four dash eighteen with Basem Government Solutions LLC for professionals lobbying services for the amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars for the Office of the Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. Clark, I will be present as well. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. That concludes our meeting. Yes. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Look, I'm so happy. Is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business? Citizens Request to Address Committee.
Tamika Seymour.
Hello, I live in War Three. I really answered questions that was said last week. And I'm trying to, I was trying to come up here and talk to them while they was up here. You know what I'm saying, to answer questions. But after they had their little interview, they ran out. He said last week about sex offenders. Years ago, when the old Adam and old mayor, Bush was the chair, uh, Chair, uh, Chair, uh, then me and Doug, Susan, Philip, Juan, we all talked about where the sex offenders gonna go. And we was at the table with Helping Hands. Helping Hands stayed out their mouth. We is not quilted to sit up there and have sex offenders in Helping Hand. And we were like, why not? We'll lose our state funding and our federal funding. And also, we don't have people trained to deal with sex offenders. You know what I'm saying? I wanted to answer that question while they was here, but you see all them ran out. That means coward. Second, they do have four counties that do stop sex offenders, and they do house them. Peoria, rest in missing. Champagne just opened one up three years ago. East St. Louis had one opened up a while ago. Chicago got one on East Side. They got shelters that will take sex offenders, and they house the ones in Chicago very quickly. Second, I think War Six, Jennifer or Bradley asked about the storage unit at Helping Hands. You only allow two boxes on your bed. They said they are not quilted to hold their furniture. We also had a meeting. We asked them why can't they get them little carry box and have them put their stuff in there that they don't have to lose? Or take one of the empty bottles, one of the empties buildings downtown to convert it into where they can have their stuff stored, take showers during the day, come in and wash their own stuff for free. They said, here come Latvia. We don't have the funding for that. You know what I'm saying? They, what they always come up here and do, they tell y'all the good points of what they're doing in the community, but they not telling you the honesty, the bad part of the community. Now, you talking about Cooley comes up here and talking about she has the trans. Oh, man, I used to go to that program. I got kicked out of it because I was a trans. They saying I was not. You know what I'm saying? I went and tried to call her. She refused to come, telephoned phone calls. I go talk to her workers. We not here to serve you when I need help. I'm a trans. I can't get no assistance from Cooley office. Only assistance I get through these programs, they say, I can go talk to Penny. Penny give me what I need. I can go talk to the city. They give me what I need. I'm struggling right now. And Helping Hands talking about, are we helping the people keep their house? They not helping me. They not giving me that assistance. They not giving me that authority. And I used to be homeless. I'm on the team of the cat team at my church. I supposed to be over there, be feeding them. Here comes Jill, say, we feed them. They told my church, I'm not allowed to come over there and feed them. Helping Hands said that. That's why I backed up. I, I said, when in my church say, I need, we need Tamika, Tamika coming with us. Then when they talking about, we want to hire a year after you be homeless, you can get a job here. I applied for a job at Helping Hand. They denied me. That's a hypocrite. When I'm out here doing the same work for free advocating to help the homeless, I get turned down.
You got five seconds.
You know what I'm saying? That blueprint that they, they working right now on Helping Hands? That blueprint came from me. One stolen, gave it to Helping Hands. The mayor gave it to Helping Hands.
Tamika, your five minutes.
Okay, I got one last thing.
Tamika, your five minutes are up.
But I'm just saying, I want them be at the table next time. I want them to be in the room next time. We can ask the question, make them answer it.
Thank you.
Robert Fraser.
Thank you. I, I have, I struggle a lot with putting together messages that I want to talk about. Obviously, y'all know about the CSA program. But first thing I want to do is show respect to everybody here with all the, regardless, regardless of what your position is, mayor, elected officials, business, non-for-profits, and fellow citizens. Emphasize that there's no personal attack on anybody. But we have a problem here, and our problem surrounds poverty. So I did a little research about people that are on the horseshoe, and most everybody is either retired from the state, federal, or city, good-paying jobs. I don't think you guys have any idea what poverty is. I said, most. I didn't say everybody. I didn't want to point out those that do because there's a few. So what we, what I would like to see is some attention paid to that, you know, these emergency ordinances that go out to identify what real poverty that we do have going on in this city. Because it's not going to go away. It's not going to just poof disappear. I guarantee you that if we requested for those that are living in impoverished situations, that live in poverty every day, to come up to this council and be in this room, we would fill up this building, and we would be around the corner and fill the streets. It's sad that we're not addressing these issues that are happening every day. So I hear the word sustainable. I listened to these people talk today about what's going on and. I listened to these people talk today about what's going on and what they're doing, and one thing I didn't like was the fact that you, you, you called out Washington Street Mission, but you failed to talk to the person that runs it. We are creating a situation where we have more red tape than we need. We don't need to go through the continuum of care to drill, deal directly with the Washington Street Mission and their issues. Sustainable. Is poverty sustainable? I'll ask it again, is poverty sustainable? No, it's not. These people that, uh, deal with poverty every day and live, um, what is poverty, right? A person or, or a community that lacks financial resources and essentials for a minimum standard of living. Doesn't necessarily include housing, but it definitely includes the day-to-day, but food, shh, uh, clean clothes, uh, health. What are we doing about poverty? We have lack of access to basic services. I don't know, but I go to some of these agencies and, uh, I have to, uh, knock on the door for them, they'll unlock it. We're servicing the public and we're afraid to even deal with them. It's a shame that we walk, we operate in fear of people that we're supposed to serve and work together with. Employment opportunities are abysmal. You could talk to any employer anywhere around this city, they're looking for people. We need to be preparing people to be able to hold down jobs. We don't do enough of that. People get disqualified from jobs just because of the way they fill out the applications and there so. There is no organization that I know of or hear of that is spending a lot of time on working with the community about how to fill out an application and how to complete a job and how to stay on the job consistently. I know there's a lot, a lot, we're gonna, I'm gonna be able to finish because my time is running out. But CSA is an organization that, that helps people with their basic needs of laundry. And we continue to do that on an everyday basis. And to end with, what can we do? Where does it start? It starts here and now. It starts with the city as a facilitator. And the opportunity for change is real. CSA is a vehicle to provide solutions for the community, and that's what we're doing every day, and I just appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser. Can you, um, stay up here for one second? Alderman Williams.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, what? So, um, when I, when, when they was presenting, you did cross my mind in the CSA.
Yeah.
And I, I was wondering, is there any way, uh, you could offer your, uh, laundry program or services to those agencies that make up the continuum of care? Since, um, they are housing a lot of these individuals, there would have to be a need for, I mean, maybe they have a laundry facility, I don't know, but have you ever had a conversation or tried to talk to these individual agencies to offer this service to maybe contract with them or do something like that to provide your laundry service to them?
All of these people we know, I know personally. I spend a lot of time in and around these people at different meetings all the time. We exchange pleasantries, how's things going? They know exactly what we do. They just choose not to support it. But every one of those agencies we would support. We document. Every time somebody comes in the facility, it's not something that's free to just open, walk in the door. They have to come up to the counter and say, I want to participate in the CSA program. Every one of those agencies we support, and we do that right now. So, but they don't support us monetarily. They know about the program, they utilize the program, they encourage their, their people to use the program because it's available to them.
Well, have, have you ever talked to the lead agency, well?
I, I talked, like I said-
I mean, have you ever-
Like I said, we, you know, I'm not, I'm not in the begging business. I don't beg people. I, I provide a service. We, 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 we realize the, uh, problem, we provide a solution. Like I said, we talk to these people every day. They know what we do. Nobody's, I shouldn't have to tell you, well, please, please help us, you know, we need your help. They know what's going on. They, they hear the data. These numbers that I've given, these aren't made up, these are all real. I look at the numbers, we, 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 we're almost in a situation where we were pitting nonprofit organizations against one another and what they're trying to accomplish. And we have to stay away from that. That's a, that's a recipe for disaster. And, and what's gonna actually happen is the people are gonna revolt. That, eventually, they're gonna show up here because they want, they have wants and needs to be met. We support every one of those organizations and we do it every day.
Thanks.
Thank you. We, um, can you say, Mr. Fraser? Alderwoman Conley?
Thank, thank you, Chair. And, Mr. Fraser, thank you. We've talked about this, um, and I have so much respect for what you do, out of the goodness of your heart, out of the depth of your, your business. And you're right, clean laundry is more than just a luxury, it's, it's a, it's a vital necessity of life.
Yes, ma'am.
But I think one thing that kind of came out tonight is, is the, the need for really clear communication. And I think what Alderman Williams was kind of getting out, um, and I, and I think it's a valid point, is this is not a, do you go with hat in hand? But maybe just sit down and, and say, can we have a conversation about this? And, and because I think sometimes people make assumptions about, you know, how well that's funded and, and where your, what your resources are.
Yeah.
And, and there just might be, I mean, we, we just talked about this, we have gaps in knowledge and-
Yeah.
And I would, I would encourage you to maybe just say, you know, reach out to, you know, especially Josh and just say, can we have a conversation about this?
Yeah.
Your, people are coming here and using this service and, and we're at a point now where it really is, I mean, you've, you've said this, and, you know, there's, there's a financial issue there. Um, we do also need to talk, I think there are some other grants that I think, you know, as you're a 501(c), that maybe we can look at and, and get you lined up for. But I, I think we need to be careful about what assumptions we make about what everyone knows. And just real quickly to that end, and I appreciate the way you stated this. Yes, I have worked for the state now for over twenty-five years. But I will tell you, I have been that single mother who lived paycheck to payday loan.
Yes.
To check.
Absolutely.
I, I have, neither one of the cars that I drive right now were made within the last ten years. Well, one was made in the last ten years. But I, I think we just need to be very careful when we make assumptions about where people are based on, yeah, I'm on the West Side, but-
Rich.
Sorry? Rich, yeah. I, I am fortunate, and I, and I acknowledge that I've, I've gotten to a place now and I'm very grateful for that. But please know, I, I have also been that single parent who's, whose children were on the free lunch, who, I mean, I, yeah, there was a payday loan place, and that was, that was, if something came up, that's where I went. And I don't have family in town, I didn't have other resources. And I acknowledge that my privilege, I, I worked hard, I got some good opportunities. Actually, had one of my former, um, bosses was in here earlier tonight, and, and he helped me out in, in a time when I had landed at a spot that was not great for me. And, and he gave me a hand, and that, that helped me. I acknowledge all of that, but I think we just need to be very careful. I've, um, and in, in what we, what we assume about where people are and where they are. And again, and that's why I think maybe there may be that lack of communication with you and, and the continuum of care. And if we can facilitate that conversation, I'm certainly happy to have it with you, with Josh, um, because I agree with you a hundred percent.
Right.
I, I've also been that person who's had to figure out which quarters we're gonna go to, you know, are we gonna have laundry, get it washed, and then just take it home to the line to dry it? Because that's where I was at that point. And it's not something you can go without. And so I, what you do is a critical support for our community, and we need to make sure that that, that continues. And, um, like I said, I'm, I'm more than willing to make myself available to help facilitate those conversations if, if that would make you, if that would work for you, sir.
Absolutely, any kind of, uh, support. And, and I, and I appreciate you, uh, from your perspective of, uh, talking about where you've been and, and throughout the track. But, you know, once again, the reality of getting financial support from the continuum of care is none. They just showed you a report where there are two million dollars, uh, in the red.
For housing.
So, so, so for housing. So, um, they're not set up. It's one of these things, one of the things about grants and, and funding for laundry is it doesn't fit in the box. So, when people are looking at, uh, giving assistance, there is, they make it so, uh, difficult to include something that's so basic as laundry, it just falls through the cracks because it's not mentioned specifically by saying laundry. But I, I get it. You know, once again, Josh and I are friends. I mean, Josh and I, we, we see each other, hey, you know, how's it going, everything? He knows exactly what we're doing. They don't have the support, they don't have the funding to fund anything except what they're doing. Just to be perfectly honest with you, it's not like they don't know, and most of these agencies don't know. They do know, but they, they can't find a way to support.
Well, and I think maybe if we, we, we need to have kind of more of that conversation because, um, again, having lived also, and having to deal with state and federal grant processes, um, you know, those requirements for what's funded can change.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and it can change on how you write what your, what your grant request is.
Right.
So, you know, you know, again, maybe it's just a, a more blunt conversation that needs to be had.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything you do.
Thanks, Ms. Fraser.
Thank you.
Alice Ramey.
You're done. Go on.
Danny Gilmore. Lynn Kinné. Kinné. Dennis Pittinger. Charles Hattrager. Alan Dent. Rosanna Pulito.
Thank you, Council, for, uh, letting me address you. Hope that all of you got an opportunity to read Seniors in Turmoil that was in the Illinois Times. I'm just gonna read what I wrote. Seniors at Meadowview Landing and Meadowview Place have been subjected to financial abuse and harassments, bullying and intimidation from Highland Vista Group Management and their lawyers. The hostile environment has become intolerable. I've been to the Springfield City Council at least three times since February twenty twenty-four and asked the council to take note of this out-of-state landlord and the havoc they've played in the lives of about a hundred seniors. I asked my alderman to let us, um, know what agreement settlement came from the lawyers to the Ha- Highland Vista Group and CWLP. I have a copy of the email. Since we are on limited incomes, it will have an impact. The landlord was also violating Springfield's position on third-party billing as it related to CWLP. To my surprise, I never got an answer. So I did the next right thing. I FOIA'd the records, only to find the lawyer for Highland Vista Group asked CWLP to keep it all, all quiet and not to include the information in the emails, not to make them public. Highland Vista Group lawyer Randy Passwater said in the letter to CWLP that pers- that his persons, uh, I'm sorry, and, um, I'm sor- I'm sorry, let me start over. Uh, Randy Passville said in a letter to CWLP that he, his client hopes that private matters can stay private and that all the persons that have issues with their landlords can discuss those issues with their landlords without the threat of publication of these matters. One hundred seniors having a tough times making ends meet, wanting to know how the situation is gonna affect them financially with the utilities with, uh, CWLP. So you have a hundred seniors in tough times making ends meet, wanting to know how the situation is gonna affect them financially, and the Highland Vista Group lawyer wants CWLP to keep it quiet. I have no words. And when I Googled the job description of a city alderman, this is what it said. Aldermen are elected to serve the citizens of their ward. So I also want to add that I took, uh, Alderman Donlin's suggestion and I contacted the Illinois Attorney General. And, uh, so the Attorney General sent back to me the answer from Highland Vista Group. And this is what it said. Uh, on, it was like a ledger of all my entries of payment. And, uh, in one entry, it said that there was a hundred ninety-six dollar late fee, and I've never paid my lo- my rent late, ever. But it said because the reason they were going to take, uh, ignore the late fee is because Section Eight finally gave them the money. I've never been on Section Eight in my whole life. I've never asked to be on Section Eight. So, if you read, if you Google Highland Vista Group across the United States, you will get the nastiest comments. And so all that me coming before the council is really to let you guys know what kind of players, and you know what Randy wants to do? Their lawyer, blame it all on the seniors. You know, we're just a bunch of, you know, sniveling, uh, complaining, uh, and, you know, we still have no leases. My lawyer asked for the lease, they can't find the leases. And that's initially what we did. We went to them saying, there is a problem here. And Highland Vista Group just said, oh, you're just a bunch of whining, complaining seniors. And so I just, again, wanted to alert you, uh, I'm concerned about the Section Eight being put on my name because I've never been on Section Eight in my life. But at every turn, there's no integrity in this out-of-state landlord's organization. They say one thing and do another, and, and that's how it's been, a living hell. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bradley Russell. Mary Bell Cruz Heine.
I didn't get a chance to talk to you guys last time. Been sick. I would like to start with a moment of silence for Hin Rajab, Meru Halimi, Marcellus Khalifa Williams, Emma Schaefer, Sonia Massey, and all the martyr in Palestine, for we are intertwined. Here to talk to you about Columbus. Columbus landing on the Bahamas, known as Huana Hani by the Taino people. The indigenous people living there is a symbol of colonialism, forced catalyzation, despotization of an indigenous labor force, the extermination of indigenous groups, and the beginning of slavery in the Americas. While for some Europeans and North Americans, this day marks an expansion to the Western world, for indigenous people, it serves as a reminder of what was to come. Hundred years of genocide, slavery, displacement, and cultural repression. He didn't even set foot on the United States of America, but the colonial systems initiated by Columbus' arrival could be seen to this day, such as systemic racism, white supremacy, capitalism, colorism. Columbus legacy is one of oppression, violence, and the conformity of European standards. I'm gonna read you an excerpt of his journal, entry twelve of October fourteen ninety-two, states. "I saw some who had marked wounds on their bodies, they made signs of them, asking them where, what they were, and they showed me how people from other islands nearby came there and tried to take them, and how they defend themselves. And I believe, and I believe that they come here from Tiara." And I believe, and I believe that they come here from Tiara Fermet to come to, to take them captive. They should be good and intelligent servants, for I see that they say very quickly everything that is said to them, and I believe they will become Christians very easily. But it seemed to me that they had no religion. Our Lord pleasing at the time of my departure, I will take six of them from here to your highness, in order that they may learn to speak." Columbus called in heaven to the lands he visited, Los Indios, Spanish for Indians. He initially encountered Lukayan, Taino, and Arawak peoples. Noting their gold, gold ear ornaments, Columbus took some of the Arawak prisoners and insisted that they guide him to the source of the gold. Columbus did not believe he needed to create a fortified outpost, writing, "The people here are simple warlike matters. I could conquer the whole of them with a 50 men and govern them as I pleased." To call Columbus' Day Indigenous People's Day is problematic. It's important to change the name to highlight the resistance of native populations. Some states such as Oregon, Vermont, and South Dakota now dedicate a celebration to the victims of colonialism by changing the name to the holiday Indigenous People's Day, or some Native American Day. Some have chosen not to even celebrate the day at all. Once we change a name, it will show solidarity with the most marginalized constituents you serve. We, the Springfield Families for Ceasefire, began a petition to remove Columbus' Days from our city calendar and then the state. Over the weekend, I gathered signatures of four different events at International Day of Action protests, the Veterans Homeless Encapment, at the Wild World Hispanic Celebration, and at the Abraham Lincoln Unitarian Universalist Congregation, which I will present to you today. This steps forwards to generational healing. If we don't make the appropriate changes, we're glorifying genocide and violence against all indigenous people. For those who, for those who colonized the world are trying to convince us that resistance to colonialism is terrorism. We can see that today with the one-year-long genocide on Palestine, 76 years of occupation, attacks on Yemen and Lebanon, and Iran for the occupation force funded by our federal government tax dollars. Inaction is not a resolution, no middle ground. Silence is complicit on the side of the oppressor. We don't celebrate Hitler. Why we celebrate Columbus?
Time.
Okay, while you're there, I just wish you all so much love, freedom, liberation, and free Palestine.
Thank you.
Robert Williams. Madam Chair, that's all that has signed up.
Do you adjourn?
I signed up last week, like, online.
Donlin must have hung up.
Donlin hung up.
Motion to adjourn.
I don't have you, I don't have you signed up.
I mean, I, I haven't missed yet, I promise I did. Don't second me out of this. I signed up.
Was there Mr. Pasha that signed up?
Can I be allowed to speak then? Since I, I promise you I did sign up. I'm not saying there's a fault with your system, but I, I did sign up, guys.
That's up to the chair.
And Leah did too, from downtown Springfield.
Oh, we missed the ones downtown.
Leah signed up. I saw her name on the email.
Okay, let's go back through.
He's going to go back and double check, because I knew I just saw somebody in the audience that I saw today earlier.
For, for an order, you want to?
Can we have Mr. Pasha go first?
Yeah, while we're waiting on her.
Okay, Mr. Pasha, if you'd like to come up, they're going to let you go.
I appreciate that, guys. Thank you.
So, couple things. I was, in fact, at county board tonight, and I was listening the entire time. I didn't miss a thing, so don't worry about that, guys. The thing for me, though, is the $2 million underfunding. That's pretty frustrating, I'm sure, for them, but even more so when the city has the ability to fix that rather easily. Additionally, why would they need to be the ones who need to get together? The city absolutely has the power in their hands to get them together, not at some outdoor committee thing that nobody showed up to last weekend, but an actual meeting. You guys absolutely have the ability to do that, because when you misspoke last week and called them out, how'd that sound when they showed up here and told you the truth that you didn't even know? You absolutely have the same ability all of us do to pick up a phone, send an email, or show up. Quite frankly, it's kind of frustrating that I have a full-time job, help run a non-for-profit, volunteer my time elsewhere, and I still got time to show up here every week and sometimes be better informed than the very elected officials that are responsible for the decisions that they're making. That absolutely frustrates me, so I know it damn well frustrates my community.
Yeah, please rephrase from using profanity.
Not profanity, and if we're going to have that kind of discussion, I'd like to know why they took the camera off the citizens that are speaking. So, I mean, let's not grandstand on civility here.
I can't tell you that, but I just wanted to ask, could you please rephrase, refrain from using profanity?
If it makes you feel better, sure. What's absolutely profane is that kind of micromanagement when someone's speaking. You should show that same level of concern to the not-for-profits you guys have been turning a blind eye to, who showed up here and set every one of you straight from last week. You should be embarrassed by the fact that they had to come out here and tell you what you could have found out on your own, anytime. You think they're not busy? I mean, legitimately, you don't think they're busy doing all the things that you claim they're not? That they're not using that kind of funding? I mean, let's talk about someone like Tiara, who helps run Intricate Minds. She's not here this week, she was a little busy. Getting a babysitter can be difficult sometimes, but I'm going to present her numbers. 1,488 participants, 7,155 food items, 9,029 harm reduction supplies distributed, 1,500 people have used April's Closet, which is a free clothing providing, from directly on the location of Intricate Minds, 567 free haircuts from Free Haircut Monday, 510 condoms, and 330 hygiene kits, and that is from February to September 2024, the new location that Intricate Minds has, with no funding, no grants, no city help, and it's all on a donation-dependent basis. They're working to gain funding, and so are a lot of places, to help provide additional services such as cell phones, bus tokens, ID assistance, housing referrals, and they've also put 15 people into the Heartland Housing list for housing. And that's the kind of thing where, again, all of this stuff is available. It, it's not hidden, it's not tucked away. You guys just don't do your due diligence as elected officials to be aware of the programs, people, and things that are going on directly around you. And quite frankly, it's embarrassing. Like, I had to show up to county board tonight to argue with them, because they show the same lack of concern for their citizens and the way that they feel. It doesn't matter who lived in poverty, it's what you learn from it. That's the problem, see? A lot of times when we talk about things, what you went through is meaningless to me if you learned nothing of value in the end that teaches you about how the downtrodden, marginalized, and most vulnerable in our population exist. That's the kind of thing that actually takes not only real-life experience, but actually taking the time out of your day to go find out about it. And it doesn't sound like a lot of you do that. That's very frustrating, because I'm not an elected official, and I absolutely take that time. So I would encourage all of you strongly to not force not-for-profits and other groups to show up here and justify their existence to you, when you absolutely have the ability to do that yourselves, all on your own, but you choose not to make that kind of time for them. But I'll tell you who I'm sure you make time for, other people that fundraise for you, that contribute to your election campaigns and help fund you directly, whether through projects or anything else. And that says a lot about how things get done in this city. And that doesn't make anyone feel right about it. And if you don't think I'm right, then correct me by actually showing up, doing something, and maybe put some forth, some resolutions for these services out there, like we, we tell another owner to talk to the groups that are already busy. Why don't you guys put together a resolution to get them some funding, guys? I mean, you have that kind of power in your hands. You made Sean dogwalk for three votes, and don't tell me there wasn't an ounce of white privilege in those votes. Three times you made that man do it? Do you know how Gus Gordon walked out of here last week? He looked like he lost, because he knew he hurt his own ward. And that's disgusting that that's the kind of thing that you forced on somebody. And it's that same level of privilege that I see inaction that leads to the kind of thing that happened tonight, which is you guys got served lunch by a bunch of not-for-
Ken, it's time, but we also, um, oh, I am the chair. It's time, but I also have people signed up to speak to you.
Fill out that bingo card for getting you-
That by the alderman, guys.
I have people who signed up to speak, to talk to you, if you want to walk away, or you want them to address you.
No, I'd want him to walk away.
Okay. Alderwoman Conley, I asked him to stay up here so that you could address him, and he walked back to his seat.
Uh, uh, Chair, thank you very much.
Yeah, that's what I told you, why you was talking and yelling at me.
No, I don't need him to come back up. Chair, I don't need that. Unless you want to, because you were looking at me and you were very clearly talking about me there. So first of all-
I was being a public speaker.
No, no, I'm sorry, I get to talk now, right? I respect that you come here, I listen to you every time you come, but you make assumptions about us, and I'm going to say the same thing to you. You don't know what we do after these hours. I meet with these people, with, I meet with organizations with the, do the social service providing, I read their emails, I follow their, what they're doing in there. You just made an assumption and looked right at me in my face and said, it doesn't matter what you've been, it matters what you've learned.
Correct.
Well, let me tell you what I've learned. I've learned that there has to be structures in place, the safety nets matter, and that we have to make those investments. And if you haven't watched for the last six years while I've been on council, then you've missed me trying to do that. And I see our city trying to be creative, and it's not easy. We have money, but every dollar gets allocated more than once, it seems like. There are a lot of services that need to be provided, so I get being cynical, right? There have been missteps, and there have been absolute unforced errors made. I don't disagree with any of that. And when I say unforced errors, I'm again using my polite at council voice, because I don't want our chair to have to gavel me down for some of the words that come into my mind. But please know, when you come up here and make an assumption about all of people based on limited experience, you are doing the same thing to us that you're saying that we're doing to others.
What assumption did I make that's incorrect?
Okay, you looked right at me and said, it doesn't matter where you've been, it matters what you've learned.
Correct.
When have you ever reached out to talk to me?
Was that statement, was that an untrue statement?
That is absolutely an untrue statement. I have met with these social service providers, I-
Did I say that you didn't learn anything from your experience?
Hey, you let her finish talking.
Yes, you did. You said, it doesn't matter, and then you looked at me as if I'm somehow failing. So I want you to know, it is not easy to be up here and juggle the multiple responsibilities and demands on, on the city dollars that we have. And I believe in my heart, every single person around this horseshoe wants to do the right thing for this city. And yeah, we disagree. I, Alderman Williams, you and I can disagree all day long, but we also will talk to each other, and that's important. So I would like you to just understand that a lot of this process requires difficult conversations and, and hard calls, and we are not trying to put anyone in a bad or weaker position. We are all trying to make this a better city. And I also respect that you're trying to do that, too.
Am I allowed to speak?
No, I'm done. I just wanted to have my piece. Thank you.
Am I allowed to reply?
Thank you. That's if Alderwoman Conley would-
I haven't, I don't, I mean-
I think it's only fair.
Only fair to do what?
For me to reply. I'm not trying to be rude to you, I was just saying that if you-
You absolutely were rude to us, though.
I don't think it's rude to hold my civic leaders responsible, and if you feel that me being upset with you guys is out of line or untoward, then you-
No, no, what I feel is wrong is that you make assumptions that you cannot base-
I didn't make any assumption.
Yes, you absolutely did.
All I stated to you was that it's important that you learn from your experiences, and I don't feel that with the actions that you've taken recently on the council, that you citing the poverty that you lived in over 25 years ago is a reasonable thing to assert.
I would, I would back that up, it's not been 25 years, but thank you, that's-
How long have you worked at the state?
You think everyone who works at the state is well-paid?
I mean, I don't think it's abject poverty with the wages they pay, they're all publicly available, so no, I don't think that's a fair claim to make.
Okay, listen, I'm done. We can have a conversation offline, and I'd be happy to do that with you.
Okay.
Thank you. Ken, there's one more alderman that's wanting to address you.
Of course.
Alderman Williams.
And mine comes in the form of a question. So, a, a few times I've heard several people talk about Tiara and funding. And I, I came on the council with the continuum already existing. So, so what I'm trying to understand, did she apply for funding and get denied, or?
Actually, yeah.
Because, because what I do is, just like the laundry program, I, I want to see the funding diverse. I do want to see the funding include more community members, so, but I have never seen her come up here and, and ask for funding the, the way the laundry company does. Now, maybe she did before I got on council. I don't know. So you're saying that she's applied, like, OPEC or something, or?
Oh, she'd actually applied for the cannabis district grants when she'd over, been over there on the south side.
Okay.
Southeast side, yeah, when she was over there on 1107 South Grant, she applied for the program and was rejected. And then in terms of the city program itself, I mean, a lot of that is a myriad of being able to get to those funds in the first place. As we saw last week with the convoluted approach to the community block grant funding in relation to Hoogland and the long ordeal that that took.
Yeah, so you want-
Without trying to drag that in, but I just mean in terms of that-
You want to get an argument out of me on how complicated things are about funding, especially on some of the programs that I wish to see funding, but what I was trying to find out for sure is if she has officially asked for, for funding, and you answered that for me, because I, I keep hearing that from speakers every now and then, and I'm wondering, well, and, and why isn't she a part of the continuum? Do you know the answer to that?
Well, so part of it is, I mean, she recently, just in the last year, moved over to harm reduction on the other side, like, to the north side through having to relocate. She'd already been starting into that on the south side, and I'm, I'm not going to get into the situation that caused her to move here on the mic, but that's something where in terms of that, within the last year, she was able to establish a more permanent location and a friendly award for it. And that's not a direct statement about anything, it's just the, in terms of how things worked out for her.
So it's a learning curve for me, because these services and those kind of numbers, I, I would think she would be in the continuum or a part of them or something, so, but I don't know-
So someone like Penny-
Josh has ever sat down.
Well, so Penny that was up here earlier has been a big help in terms of getting her stuff, as well as IDPH and things like that. I mean, a lot of it is the idea that they're excited by the idea that she's available to do that, because, I mean, you don't often find people that are like, I would like to dedicate my time and effort every day to helping with these kind of things, so.
So, so when I go back to my community, sometimes they let me have it about that thing, about you don't want to give the girl money, and I'm like, she's never, at least, this was news to hear about, I'm going to fight with him about the marijuana piece. I mean, this is just news to me, you know?
Absolutely, Roy.
So I just wanted to ask, just to, to be, be clear that, you know, I wasn't aware that she ever applied for money, and I just never knew the rejection, and I didn't understand why she's not a part of the continuum, since she does that kind of work like the rest of the agencies.
Well, and I think a lot of that is just having the time. I mean, it's strictly her and Tabby that's spoken here before the council previously that largely run, I mean, it's Tiara's wholly, but Tabby's literally her only helper. I mean, I try and help if I can, and so do other people, but I mean, we all have limited time to, to where it can go and how it can be done, but I mean, a lot of that is she, she as a very strong individual has done that all largely on her own effort. And the reason a lot of us bring it up, Roy, is because, I mean, frankly, we'd like to see the city be more proactive in reaching out to groups like that beyond the mainstream ones and providing access to that kind of funding. I mean, if we have people like the financial director who was helping Gus find access to the right funds for him, or like tearing down Old Town Apartments to get access to that kind of funding, why wouldn't we want to reach out to like young entrepreneurs and things like that?
Oh, now you preaching to the choir.
No, I know, Roy, and I'm just making the point, though, in that broader sense.
So what I'm saying is, there's traditional groups that get money in Springfield. I would like to see that expanded as well, is all I'm saying. And that's why, you gave me some understanding, I appreciate it. So that's why I turned my light on to ask you. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it, Roy, thank you for asking.
Ken, was you aware that our communications director just recently reached out to Tiara to sit down with her?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I think now we're just waiting on her to respond back. I think she's looking for some time and availability. So we, we are trying to work, but I just want to make sure my colleagues know that the city has reached out to her and want to sit down with her.
Yeah. Well, and I feel like that kind of transparency would be more helpful to all of us if we were more well-aware of it, just of the general public. I mean, just for example, like, right now, you can't even comment on the city council video on YouTube, like, just, just in terms of a dialogue, you know what I mean, us being able to be aware of those things, like, people didn't even know what you, what you just said. There's a lot of people who'd be happy to hear that. You know what I mean?
Yeah, because like we just said, every week, someone has came up to talk about her receiving funding and the services that she provide, and that's why our director Haley reached out to her to say, can we sit down and talk and see what could be done?
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
Of course. You guys all have a good evening.
You too.
Hi, thank you so much for your perseverance and listening to what we have to say. I know that Lakeisha Purchase has been asking us to provide an update about Adam Street Post Fire. We'll try to keep it as brief as we can. We'll try to keep it as brief as we can. I have a few guests with me, and we're going to start with Chris Nickel.
Good evening. Essentially, I'm just here to provide the, the council with an update. Um, as most of you probably know, I'm the owner of the building on Adam, Adams Street that burnt on June 19th. Um, I'm a downtown building owner. I'm on the Board of Directors of the Kidzium. I'm, of course, a member of DSI, a member of the Adams family, you know, pretty much every-
And I'm sorry, Chris, I'm, I'm just going to stop you real quick because I know you guys signed up individually so that we could give you five minutes each, so we'll start with Chris for five minutes, and I know you just wanted to make the introduction. So I just want to make sure everybody knows this so we don't look like we're running over the time. So each of you will get the five minutes that you signed up for. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
If you want to share.
Go ahead. Okay. Um, so, uh, I had, uh, had mentioned to, to Alderperson Purchase a long time ago, right after the fire, that I wanted to, at some point, uh, come to the council to essentially thank the city and, and most specifically the fire department for their efforts that day. I don't know how many of you saw it during the fire or aftermath, or I'm sure everyone saw it on the TV. Um, it, it was an amazing thing to watch. Um, I, I know they told me at some point how many firefighters were on site, but it felt like all of them, and it was amazing. Um, on a light note, one of them afterwards, uh, told me that he thinks they just relocated three inches of Lake Springfield onto Adams Street. That's how much water they dumped. Um, I, of course, know nothing about firefighting, but, um, I obviously wanted to publicly thank them for their efforts that day and, uh, and essentially probably saving the block, right? These old buildings are all connected, so. Anyway, so after that, of course, the next couple of weeks were a bit of a blur. Just a lot of insurance agents and reporters bouncing in and out of my head. Um, and then, of course, after that calmed down, it was all about relocating my tenants that I had. I owned the Cafe Moxo building next door. Um, so of course, we, um, we, we lost Cafe Moxo, well, up until now, anyway. Um, he has assured me that we're going to get him back in. He's anxious to get back in, so we're working on that now. The four apartments above Cafe Moxo, those tenants are still out of the building. Um, O'Shea is in, in the building stabilizing it, uh, well, not right now, but they're working on that at this moment. Uh, that stabilization work should be done by the end of October. Uh, once that structure is stabilized, we'll be able to then start excavating or demolishing the building that actually burnt. As you probably know, since the buildings are all connected, you can't just pull the one out in the middle because they have common walls. Um, so we're working, we're working on that right now. Um, we, we've had some trouble. I've, I've had a lot of interactions with the, with the police and, and my Alderperson has helped me with that. Um, I'm, I'm thinking somewhere there's somebody out there trading copper for meth directly, because that seems to be what's happening. I've, uh, directly, um, had direct interaction with a handful of these guys over the last few weeks. Um, not, not to anyone's pleasure. Um, so now, now we're at the, at the stage of getting to the point of fixing things. Um, uh, the, we've, we're doing the engineering on what's going to be left of the burnt building. We're going to demolish the front half. Uh, keep the five-story section in the rear, hopefully have a little plaza out front, so Cafe Moxo and the farmer's market will have some more outdoor area. Um, all of that is still, still in the drawing standpoint. Um, but we hope for all that to happen, uh, before the end of the year and, uh, you know, bring it back as something more and, and better than it was in the past. The reason I'm speaking first, of course, is because the folks that are coming after me um, are going to talk to you about the, the impact this has had on downtown. We, you know, there were a lot of other issues going on, uh, before the fire, of course, with all the construction that we've had. Mostly good in the long term, of course, but definitely has an impact. Um, and so this was a real punch in the gut, not, of course, just to me, um, but, but to me as a member of the community. So all, all of the, all of the folks that have businesses within the multi-block area around that have, have seen an impact from it. Um, and so we're, we're anxious to try to, to move on and find ways, uh, to correct those situations. So that's what the, the next handful of folks will be chatting about, and of course, I would answer any questions about the building if there are any.
Thank you, Chris. Alderman Rockford has a question for you.
Yeah.
Real quick, sir, um, can you tell me what, what caused the fire?
I, I wish I could. Um, the, the, our local fire department, uh, investigated. Uh, my insurance company investigated, and the insurance company for the building that I don't own to the east sent down special fire investigation contractors, and they went through the building and they all came back with the same answer, which was undetermined. Um, from, from the guy that owns the building as a layperson, there's, there, the fire was in the third story, uh, the ceiling above the third story, the third floor. There wasn't a floor above that, essentially just the roof burn out, burnt off. And there was, there was literally nothing on that floor except lighting. There was no HVAC that was operable, there was no mechanical stuff, the elevator didn't have anything on that floor. So if it wasn't electrical, I don't know what it was, it pretty much all that was up there. But there's no, there's no official report that states, uh, because they couldn't find anything to confirm that.
Right. Well, good luck to you.
Thanks, we're, we're-
Thank you.
We're going to need it.
You bet.
Thank you, Chris. That's it.
Elizabeth Wake.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Wake. I own the Wakeri, which is on Fifth Street. Um, so we are a non-alcoholic bar and coffee shop. So on the day of the fire, um, I had a rental group inside the Wakeri, and at 11:30 I started to smell smoke, and at about 11:40 our smoke alarms went off. So we had to evacuate. Power was cut to the whole block. Um, and because it wasn't safe to access the building, I couldn't get out any of the food or prepared foods or milk from the fridge, so I lost all of that. Our back door, um, you can't really tell from the front, but our back door connects with the parking garage that's on Adams. And so that's the building that was next to the building that completely was destroyed. Um, so our space was filled with smoke from that back door. We were closed for a full week and we were fully operational after 10 days, which in the business world is an enormous amount of time. Um, compared to losing everything, obviously, we are considered very lucky, and I do consider myself lucky, but we are still really impacted by the fire. Um, I did receive a lot of comments about the INB funds or other fundraising efforts about, like, this is why you have insurance. Well, that's true, but I want to shed a little light on, on what the insurance actually did for us. So for an incident such as a fire, our insurance doesn't kick in until 12 hours after the incident. So because we had to evacuate at 11:30, it doesn't kick in until 11:30 PM. Um, that means that a full day of business wasn't covered. Uh, in addition, because our building could be accessed on Monday, our coverage stopped on Sunday at 11:59 PM. Um, but we still couldn't conduct business because peerless had to get in to clear the air and smoke. On Wednesday, we had to spend the entire day washing every dish, every surface, every counter. Everything had to be cleaned so that we could be cleared by the health department to reopen because we are food service. Thursday, we had to spend the day restocking everything in the fridge, all of our prepared food items, all of our drink syrups, all of that, so we still couldn't open. Um, and our espresso machine went out because it couldn't be cleaned for over a week, so then we had to have that serviced, and that's about half of our income. Um, so insurance covers none of this. So when we finally received a check, it was less than a thousand dollars to cover 10 days of business that was lost. So yeah, we had insurance. We pay a lot for insurance, but it did not cover what we lost. Um, during this time, obviously, we still had bills to pay. Once our power was back on, we're still running the fridges. When we're washing the dishes, we're spending an enormous amount of water to wash and clean everything. And our normal monthly expenses like CWLP bills still need to be paid regardless of our income. So since the fire, our sales in our physical space are down 67%. We do sell beverages at the farmer's market, but because of the way that it needed to be moved, um, we are now down 50% at the farmer's market in our sales. Um, people are creatures of habit, and even though the farmer's market only moved a single block down, people got out of their normal groove of where they park, the layout of the market, and, um, our sales dropped. So we actually left the market. We are no longer participating for the remainder of the season because it is currently a loss for us to participate in the market. We were just barely paying our bills before, but now as a business, we are bleeding. So on September 1st, then we experienced a break-in. Because of the fire, the building behind us had points of entry, and the thieves broke into the parking garage and then into our back door. They stole our cash and the cash register, our safe, employee tips, the market cash boxes, and our checkbook. The apartments above us were hit, taking small appliances, TVs, laptops, and even copper from the AC units. Our personal losses totaled nearly $4,000, and again, insurance barely covers $1,000. Customers tell me that they don't know that we even reopened yet because they think that the entire area is still shut down because, um, that part of Adams Street is still closed. For those who do know we're open, foot traffic and vehicle traffic has decreased because the traffic patterns have changed. Previously, you could circle the block using Adams and then just come around back to us, but now you have to go all the way down to Capitol to turn around and come all the way back to Washington. So the traffic patterns have really changed. A 67 decrease in sales doesn't impact just me, it also impacts my sales taxes. So if I'm not making money, I'm not paying a lot of money in sales taxes, so that also reduces, um, city budgets. So it impacts you too. Um, but I bring my story before council because it's, it's important to understand the periphery of the fire damage, and I think that's my time, so thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Rob Kerr.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rob Kerr. Uh, I'm the Executive Director of Innovation and Opportunity at the University of Illinois Springfield. Um, that means that I get to lead our downtown innovation center, which includes Innovate Springfield, the university's business incubator at Fifth and Adams. So we had a front row seat for what's going on, um, back in the June fire and have been working with entities, uh, since then. So, um, I'm just here to, to make sure that you're all aware on the council that UIS is committed to supporting all businesses in the region, and, and at this time particularly those that are impacted, uh, by the Adams Street fire. So we are working with local partners like Downtown Springfield, Inc., uh, to connect the UIS expertise on our campus, the faculty, uh, the programs, the various departments, uh, to help them work with the businesses to build this downtown ecosystem that we've been trying to build through Innovate Springfield for the past, uh, 12 years. Ultimately, we're trying to find, uh, create an opportunity for these businesses to, to thrive. And, uh, this particular moment, um, we're facing significant, these businesses are facing significant difficulties. So one thing we are doing is offering, uh, free memberships to Innovate Springfield, uh, for downtown entities that are impacted by the fire. So this will give them access to our programs and services, including legal, accounting, and, uh, HR guidance from local professionals that partner with Innovate Springfield, a variety of workshops, and then most importantly, the one-on-one guidance that we can provide. So if you could, help me please spread the word, if you know of any business owners uh, or other entities that could benefit from this, I'd encourage you to have them, uh, visit our website, UIS.edu/innovation, and that's where they can sign up. And as I said, if they're, uh, an entity that's been impacted by the fire, uh, we will waive fees for that membership. We just want them to come in so, so we can help them and serve them. That's all.
Thank you.
Carlos Ortega.
Hello, City Council. My name is Carlos Ortega. I'm the Executive Director of Downtown Springfield Incorporated. Uh, first of all, I want to thank everyone here for allowing me to, uh, uh, hold this space today. Uh, DSI is a 30-year organization, and I'm not the only one who's actually created the opportunities and worked towards the future of a better downtown Springfield with our business owners, our nonprofits and other establishments that actually, uh, create vital opportunities for, uh, the citizens of Springfield in our downtown area. The, uh, January fire has impacted our small business community tragically. Uh, one of the things, um, that I believe that Downtown Springfield Incorporated has tried to do was try to uplift, uh, through the, um, IMB, uh, grand, uh, IMB fund, uh, that actually has hap, uh, that has actually supported, uh, over about $30,000 of, in, um, uh, distributions to the businesses directly impacted by the fire. Uh, one of the things that I would like to do is try to facilitate that, uh, to the businesses that have also been, um, impacted by it, not necessarily directly impacted by the fire, but also outside of that range, a little bit like Elizabeth was talking about. Um, Downtown Springfield Incorporated, as a new Executive Director, uh, of this organization, I'm committed to making sure that our community grows, that we have a strong business ecosystem with our partners such as Innovate Springfield, and that we partner with, uh, other institutions in the city to actually expand the programs and the opportunities to our residents here in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. And Leah, is Leah our last person?
Yes.
Leah.
Hi, thank you. My name is Leah Wilson. I'm the Executive Director of Kidzium. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak and also for your leadership. Every time I attend or listen to a city council meeting, I am reminded that your jobs are not easy, so thank you. Kidzium's mission is to inspire curiosity and a love for science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics, which we call STEAM, through hands-on learning. Over the past six years since we opened, we have positively impacted over 100,000 children and their families through interactive exhibits and educational programs that foster a passion for learning. From exhibits like Bees, Butterflies, and Blooms to our partnership with Springfield School District 186 that has provided over 3,000 second graders with innovative science education through its STEAM residency program. Kidzium has been a key contributor in our educational ecosystem, and we are poised to do more. Our museum has faced financial challenges since we opened in 2018. Unforeseen construction debt, lower-than-projected attendance, and the COVID-19 pandemic have made survival a challenge for our young nonprofit. We've made it this far thanks to the unwavering support of our key donors, federal relief during and after the pandemic, state grants for renovations, and city support for key projects like our roof replacement, which we are very grateful for. Despite this support, our sustainability is still in question. Our ongoing challenges have been exacerbated by the fire on Adams Street, which resulted in a 50% decline in revenue for our most critical summer months. Cafe Moxo, a key business that drove foot traffic to the museum, remains closed. Street closure makes it challenging for our buses to pick up and drop off our students, and also provides visitors, especially the ones with strollers and diaper bags and other, uh, materials that they have to carry with their young children, a deterrent. Not to mention the visual impact of a fire-ravaged building spilling its contents into the street. This acute event is part of a chronic issue, however, and that issue is our downtown location. While our location has been essential to our identity and our mission, it also presents unique challenges for our sustainability. With growth continually focused westward, downtown struggles from a lack of investment. Compounding this issue is the loss of thousands of state jobs and the shift to remote work since the pandemic. The result has been significantly reduced foot traffic and economic activity in downtown. Kidzium, as one of Downtown Springfield's few family-friendly destinations, plays a key role in driving local economic activity, but it can only thrive if broader downtown, uh, area receives the investment it desperately needs, and if we adequately connect downtown to our surrounding wards and neighborhoods. As we consider a new master plan for downtown due to be unveiled later this month, I ask that we really strongly consider what is at stake. I fear that the dominoes may fall in downtown if we don't take bold and decisive action. Some will say that it's too late for downtown, that it's too hard to change the course of decline that has been decades in the making. I recently heard someone joke that we should just move the Capitol Building to White Oak, White Oaks Mall along with everything else. Maybe we should do that. Or perhaps we should try again. Today can be the day that moves our downtown toward vibrancy. Our city has or can acquire the resources it needs to thrive. There are many talented professionals and citizens who care and who are willing to do the work, and we want to be on your team. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the one question I have, I don't know if this is for Director Fuchs or for Chris. Um, the street was open and accessible during the Mother Road Route 66, and my phone, I received a lot of calls and text messages about that. I know at this moment, we're in heavy demo construction, right? Or no, we're not?
We are working in, inside the Cafe Moxo building.
Okay, so Director Fuchs, could we look into how that worked out for Mother Road to see if it could continue to work out?
to see if it could continue to work out until the actual demo goes on? Because it looked like it, it did well that day.
I would be happy to, to take a look at that, review that with the traffic engineers, but my primary mission in the city of Springfield is public safety. We have a large unstable debris field in the middle of the 400 block of East Adams, and that will be my primary consideration.
And that's what I said to the businesses, so they didn't understand how it got opened that day, with all the people walking through there, or it just being open with the safety. So I said, as you all speak about it, that's something that Director Fuchs will be able to.
I'll take a look at it.
Yeah. And thank you, we would greatly appreciate an update.
Certainly.
I, for my colleagues, I know, I know that it's been a lot of people coming to speak, and a lot of them are out of my ward, but my downtown businesses are feeling my frustration right now. So as I told them, you all have to come here and speak as well, especially the way I'm being dragged. There's only so much that I can keep saying over and over, so I'm asking them to come and speak in front of you all, because I represent them, and this is not just downtown for Ward Five, this is downtown for the entire city of Springfield. I don't like that sometimes it comes off as, last week with the votes with Sean, that when I asked for a no vote on the TIF, you just heard what the impact is on Adams Street. I need the TIF, and we all can agree on it with multiple projects coming forward, that we need that TIF to go on Adams Street and try to figure out another way to fund, and that's what I did. I tried to compromise and say, could we pull from corporate fund, so CDBG funds could stay over on the east side as well, but I'm just. So as I was saying, I think it's important for them to come and speak to all of us as well, to share what's going on and the impact that they're having, as well as others are coming up here to share. And I just know it's been a lot, and it's been a long four to five weeks of us being here to about 9:30, 10 o'clock at night, but it's important to hear. Near North Lincoln Towers, you all have heard me talk numerous times about Lincoln Towers too, and Sangamon Towers, that's just, we have to figure that out, so I needed the seniors to be able to come and speak in front of you, and five of their names were called, and they couldn't stay that long neither. Some of them have disabilities that they, they needed to get back home. So I appreciate you all listening every week to individuals I have asked to come here and share their stories and the impact that they're having. Alderman Williams.
Yeah. I just think you need to learn to say no sometime, thank you.
Alderman Rockford.
Thank you. So, so getting down to Adams Street, so this, this road has been blocked off, we, we open it up for certain, certain venues, and then we block it back off. If it's unsafe, it's unsafe, you know, whether it's, whether it's for the, the Mother Road or it's for, you know, traffic to get to these, to the Kidzium or get to the restaurants, you know? I think it's either, you know, get it done or you're get off the pot, you know, we, we got to get something done, it's, we're dragging our feet, please.
Now, Alderman Rockford, that's why I asked Director Fuchs to come up, because we didn't understand how that had worked neither.
Well, and then again, I just, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I, I wanted to take, take the weight off Director's shoulders there, because I didn't know that was happening. People called me and said, hey, you finally convinced the city to let you open the road? And I'm like, what do you mean? I didn't know it was, right? I mean, I had no idea what was going on. And so I, obviously, I'm not, I probably shouldn't even be announcing this, but it turns out that it was just, one of the contractors knew one of the guys that ran the car show, and they talked to each other and said, hey, can you move the fence? And he said, sure, I'll move the fence, and it just happened. No, no one at the, no one at the city nor I had any idea it was going to happen or knew it happened until after the fact, and I, and I didn't know about it until it was over.
And that's, and that's fine, but what happens if something does happen?
No, I agree.
You know, so, again, you know, it, it's, it's buddy-buddy stuff, and it gets old, you know? Let's get something done, you know, down there, let's, let's do something. We got people that are suffering, you know, we, we need to, we need to do something with downtown. You know, we, we get people fighting about TIF funds and, and how we're going to fund this and how we're going to fund that. I'm sure.